I just make sure you use it.
Yeah.
All right. See you.
She like.
Like a little bit of that.
Okay, I don't, I can do that.
Of course. I know it's music.
Three.
It's off.
So.
Okay.
You have people pop in early Monday morning and it's look on Saturday or Sunday.
My gosh.
I need to carry that.
Trying to open the phone.
How, how people shop for cars? They just wanted to have people shop if they go see something kind of life on a weekend or call you early Monday morning.
Websites, you got a website.
Well, that's a different.
What's this? Oh, the podium.
Those were four. HR, she's got a put in there, she has stuff on it. We're, we're on.
We're good. All right, we'll call meeting order. Start with the legislative.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Here.
One hundred.
Hundred.
Even if it's all. The legislature can be that's.
Good morning.
Yeah. Range, at least starting range. With the job. Do we need to do a second session? We have.
Well. Not really discuss this hour because it's not, it's not real. We're not talking person yet, but.
Is it just gonna be a negotiated position again?
It's kind of.
Yeah. Kind of like. Lowest, so probably they have logos, something that I, I haven't did something in the end.
What we put last one, remember?
I don't remember it, I don't have access to it.
You said a copy of that.
Um, I probably do if I could be adding, I'm not sure if I did or didn't.
No, it could be responsible, yeah, I'd say that had worked pretty good, whatever it was, so.
Well, I can get that, I mean, I got it out there and I, and I just put it very. You know, and then obviously in the bottom of the, but to be term by experience, motion, he shares what I, I did. So.
Right.
But I, if I, obviously definitely, but they love what they call, what we have, so, but I just wanted to mention out here. And, um, obviously the resume from the media and the movie on, you know, when. Copy of. Their resume is on our. Okay, okay. Give me to bring them in on the day that you guys are going to do it.
Um, oh, but they, um, this.
And any name, no, I don't have any name.
So I would say that, um.
The parts are gonna be open, so. Yeah, I usually open some still, and I will say if I, I think I get a resume, what I can do is I'm gonna.
There are times when you. The computer talks what it's supposed to. And technology works, not very.
Then it doesn't have a salary on it. They didn't have a salary.
That's true. I think Darren won that up.
Thank you. Yeah, and, and I don't know, that was on the, on the resume, but it was indeed, that one was indeed, does have a salary.
Well, I'm guessing it's going to be a similar range.
Okay.
That's my guess.
Yeah, sure, no salary. I mean, I think there's.
But if you want to use this hour, which is instead of a similar range, what would it stand, so.
Okay, okay.
Because if they're not qualified, they're.
Oh, obviously.
Right.
Okay. Well, that's all I add unless there was some specific one that in that job. What we want to.
When you have sent me. You sent me a.
Yes, and that's what I've been.
How many days? I guess some.
It, I put down, um, five days of leave, but there are evening, the weekends and meetings after hours in that, so they understand that it's not gonna be.
So there's a few things that change in that. That does have a line. That's telling compared to things that are the first on, so I have a change in HR.
Yeah.
Uh. And I'm not so sure we're gonna put some on if they're gonna watch or don't have.
Right.
I mean, it can be a or until.
Like a big other one.
Go on, it's just not, the holidays and everything, what's all.
Maybe.
Simply.
I'm gonna say January. November.
January sixteenth, the, maybe we jump to January sixteenth. That's a number. Or maybe January thirteenth, which is five, four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we get called by everyone.
Oh.
Long, we can never do that.
Oh, yeah.
I would think that, or it's like, yeah, perhaps with, uh.
Yeah, I've got.
Yeah, if we did, January thirteenth, go until position, sure, we have a little concept, and if we've had any other person before, that would give me the. But it was also person. Up, um, to get their applications out, not where.
Well. Um, yeah. I was gonna put it, I can put it on the shirt website for free, which, I mean, I was gonna go ahead and do that anyway, except that have a lot of.
Where did the other applicant stem from on the last time of this?
Well, I think.
Because I think there was two, were you?
There were some that, I mean, people that wasn't even the county.
So I would say, uh.
There's that, and then there's a couple of local online. Like the O State County News.
Right.
Yeah, just put a newspaper chip on it and.
O State County News is separate from the.
There's two.
Yeah, I've got one online, which is.
O State County Online.
Wing wide.
Wing wide, wing low, the obvious one.
Okay. The only thing I don't see on this, and I think it's because this morphed a little bit, is about the social media and technology, and that's probably gonna need to be added to this.
Okay.
So.
And also last time we tapped into the, uh. Department of Commerce, kind of that helped.
Yeah.
Up things. And.
We had one manager from, uh. From the South Central Region, I think he was from. Like, and there is more. Or help entertain there, uh, doing these, I guess. Which is very good help. Which I have started, I think, so.
You have what?
I have myself, why I was calling the.
I think these need to be included somehow. And. Yeah, I, if you can, um, and I'll get it, if you come up with some variety of the things of how to say it.
Yeah.
I would. Because I think the way that that position evolved a little bit, where she was kind of overall the social media.
Yeah.
Presence and then very high scale technology wise. So I thought that's gonna need to be, it, it would be really good fit.
Yeah. Okay. If you look at.
Me. Brother, I have a role.
Oh. Was there anything else?
Sorry.
Well. I'll be later.
Yeah, I do.
If we get on a agenda for that.
Is that Christine, I think she was gonna do everything when she was.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, you know, I thought.
Is that for the website?
For the website, no.
Website.
Unless she wanted to do stuff, that was when I was gone.
Well, she could try to have it, except for time, you can try to have man on here, but.
Well, we have.
We can do it, um. Well, why don't we get, um.
I can get Missy down here now.
Right.
And then I can do my state really quick and then it.
A bit positive.
At nine.
Huh?
What's that, I'm not a ten, you know, it's. There's some people involved in that, but they don't want here, so.
Okay. Okay.
We get a hold of Lucy one more. I don't know what's on slide.
Melissa goes, just what we descend the hands, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Bye. I had a question then. That. The amount charged or whatever that they submitted wasn't, was, I thought we agreed on.
That's a great bill, this is the, see, people. No, I don't.
I thought the, I guess what was.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The problem.
How is everyone?
Well, how do they get to the side?
Weekend's go back.
Yeah.
Because they sent back what we asked for, but they changed you now.
Not.
Okay, maybe I've learned something.
This is.
So.
Josh and I typed this up with the hand agreement and basically the agency addition to, um, I just received it this morning. Um, and I hope to have a copy, I didn't make everybody a copy, of the response from Patrick with Pam that says that this email is acceptable and we made the pay, they nailed a payment last week.
So is this for the? From now, from now going forward?
Yes.
It's not in regards, but it's not in regards to what they owe for the past.
This is in regards from now going forward, but on the fact that the top, it does state, um, that they are due the past, that they will pay the past amount. And he has a free. And that they will pay the past payment, Pam shall prepay the five hundred and fifty, or the fifty five hundred, um. Associated with a special event, so I'm assuming that's what they have mailed. I don't know, like I said, I haven't received.
Once we did that check, then you do, we're a model, we're going there, because I think what she's after is that. Wherever in an place and where the numbers are doing, so you know, it's not the same.
But it's, but Pam should pay any path and all past due payments from the original four hundred minutes prior to December fifteenth, twenty.
But what I'm saying is, is that there was an agreement for that to extend that.
Right.
They didn't pay that, but they didn't pay those fees.
Right.
And even ones are new, when they send out.
Pay those now.
But in the new one they sent, that's showing we used to.
They have the wrong fee and. They have fifteen cents. I see it, see where they have fifteen cents, that was supposed to be twenty, so I don't know where they came up with fifteen. So here during all that, so. Um. So that's what, uh.
Which is something totally separate from this.
Sure. It just needs to.
Once we have the check in hand, then we go back to.
So you don't wanna sign it to the check again?
No, that's, this is, this one won't work, in fact, because five hundred dollars. Right, but if they've sent a check, then they'll be good, what I'm talking about is the other one.
Right.
As a model, we go on.
Quite much other than the recent transaction. Like the recent email, as far as. An agreement, the extension.
So. The agreement was made in an open meeting. Correct?
Right.
Because they had been here a couple of times. Right, to try to work this out and then eventually. It was agreed we would extend it. Or to this date. Yeah, and it was gonna end in August, or something like that. Was ending in August or September.
I was saying it was October.
Maybe six months or something. So in the meeting, it was finally they agreed and it went for like six months and it was twenty five cents on anything that was called, called out.
The numbers looked awful well, you know, what they set up, so. That's how it is, it is, but that's.
Include a Josh and I for everything.
Right.
Thank you.
So that's, uh, once we have a hand.
Right, okay, well, you need to email back to tell him that rate is.
Go on.
She needs to let them know that rate is off. That fifty.
To write the agreement or, you know, the prior.
On the prior.
Well, the problem is, prior to the. To have a temporary extension. Nobody ever made a new.
I was just thinking you should have done this, maybe Josh. You don't know.
Nobody ever made a new.
Sorry.
I know, you're fine.
Problems.
Questions are good, that's how I learn them. I don't know what's going on, I didn't ask the other question.
There's kind of two separate issues.
Exactly.
Because we've extended this twice.
I'm sorry.
And.
So, yeah.
So this one's just the silent.
The current one to get the remainder of the million out.
Uh, we're, 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 this one, we just gotta do a sham and so.
Right.
And then maybe.
Martin, would you guys have some, um, with a solid copper back from London?
Yeah. That makes it basically on point.
That they've already nailed the female on this, who made the fifty five hundred? Maybe the fifty five hundred or the. One of the two. One, some, I wouldn't, yeah, one in one of them.
That may have achieved. It was rich too.
I'll get right, I'll see, right. Yeah. Um. The past stuff, I mean, I can send an email, but I wonder to just.
What's that?
Send the email on the, the fifty percent versus the twelve, for fifteen cents versus the twenty five cents, I wonder Joshua Warren, love resume.
I would let see what they're, but, uh. Yeah, because we'll go back and get some, we're, we're, we're. And maybe you know, so.
Emma sent the bar really high on the door.
Uh, he did.
Just say all that.
It's just gonna be.
You wanna try?
Look at, well, we get our, because you made us hard.
No, I'm gonna put from what I need to do, I think I'm gonna do Jack and Paul's over to, do you have the extra paper? Like, to cover the. I don't.
You're gonna do what?
Grinch is made of.
What'd you just say?
I'm gonna do Bob and Josh's.
Why don't you do our?
You don't want me to. I'm gonna do Bob and Josh's, with your pictures on it. That's better. If it's me, make me look. Does it?
That was it.
Right, thanks, come and get me.
Thank you.
And you're always in the point, right?
Do we have a wait till nine AM? So it's.
No, I was just gonna go one, and what I just wanted to let you know that I still have a couple of offices to get them from, I was not here last week. Couple of days and I, I'm out tomorrow morning for an appointment, but, um. I will get the rest of those in, I talked to C I P and I think who I talked to did not understand what I needed. Um, they went back to Debbie, so I need to go back to Debbie and just make sure that we're all on the same page, because as soon as they just give us like. Some basic answers, some basic questions, then we'll start cutting that. And we'll. So, so what I have could be different than what Christine has, what I have to be different than what Liz has, so everybody's gonna have their own, and then, I guess, and. You know, in, in the future, whoever's looking at this in the future. They may want to try to get a little bit more. Uniform.
Right.
Between the offices, they can have it. I mean, I realize like the attorney's office is gonna be evil, I don't count evil, so that's gonna be different. The health department has different things than the work department, I realized that, we may want just a little bit more uniformity.
Well, at least once we get them in, we can look through that in case there's something that's kind of obvious that needs to be. Made that way, so like. What gets divided, what's something that's the same thing at each department?
I would say like. Or publication.
So, so we just, so like, let's say one person labeled it advertising and someone else labeled it publication, we just need to decide what are we gonna call it, and call that the same thing at each department.
Okay, so do you want me to take what they have, put it in Excel and bring it to you and the commissioners are gonna decide what they're gonna call those things? Or do you just want us to look through and say, this was a publication, this was of ours, I think we're gonna call it. Publication pop.
I think that that example that we had, I look at Mountain County. Um, I mean, ours was small, but I thought it was really good the way they had it, where it was just, I just literally went to like the commodities and I looked through and I looked for details, okay, that one fits, that one fits, that one fits. So I would kind of do what they did, where under commodity, they call listed alphabetically. And then. If their stuff fits right in that, that's fine, if they had to create a new one, that's fine too, if they have something specific, but there should be a lot of them that. Should be uniform when the departments have some of the similar expenses. Um. And whatever, if commodities should be a commodity, whatever's contractual, so not, not to like, if somebody labeled something. That should have been contractual, means, you know what I mean, not to mix it up between commodity, but. Um, Allen County, I thought was really, I really liked. I liked, I don't know if that counts, counties do or not, but. Um, I think we should, like, get them all in, we need to please review it, maybe it just jumps out at us, but looks odd, or we get questions, or we can add them to the apartment. If we have a question on something.
Okay, alright.
We just wanna make sure we don't have a similar expense that all gets labeled something different in each department.
Hmm.
I don't think that'll be that hard to.
Yeah, I don't.
So, and then the timeline though, we're gonna start, so we think we're good to get everything in done by the first, that was kind of our goal.
Right, well, we will actually take building until the fifteenth, so. Of, of June, so we have, yeah, so we have a little bit of, a little bit of time, but we still need to be getting them. Set up, so.
What are the couple departments you're waiting on?
I'll have to go get my list.
Off my.
A while.
Then calling activity and seeing how important they need to.
I'll make contact with the ones I don't have, and let them know that we're waiting on them and.
And then do you know where we're at with this federal signing to get that?
That I can have in my meeting account, and I will try to get that done this afternoon, if not, I will, I would say.
Okay, we probably, does anybody else have that, we probably need to have these two other people that haven't, like, I don't know if they, you can have additional users on it, or.
So the thing that we're working on now, is that gonna be our new sheets that we get, or is it gonna work like that?
It'll have everything, I mean, if you're asking about the budget breakdowns. After the first of January, you'll have all of this budget breakdown coming.
The new ones.
Right.
Morning.
How are you?
Thanks.
Josh, you're. I'm assuming you're good. Everybody's here, we're just waiting on you to show up. Should have waited longer.
Yeah.
And I think Josh, I say here today in the taxi, okay, so I'm gonna tag two minutes. Well, she, she lost.
Yeah. Oh, oh, I thought.
Yeah.
What is something?
We're heading to the corner more.
Yeah. I'd like to know that we're meeting, before I wanted to show you the updated, uh, position description.
Oh, I just added the IT and the technology stuff to that description, if you wanna look at it. Where do you put it at?
Let me know what you think of it. So ours is junction, we're not.
Sorry.
Should have told you that.
That's okay. I did also hear from the postal service. On both sides.
Are they gonna open it back now?
No. This is what I was told and why they don't tell me when it is from the very beginning, I do not understand.
What's the postal office?
For the postal office, I heard from Washington. And the postal service in Washington did, they told me that all I have to do is contact the O State City Postmaster. If it comes in the, I wanna be added to the rural round. The rural, and the postmaster, will I have the route driver. Flagging area where I can put my post, my, my mailbox, it will not be in front of my house, instead of the route, it can go by my house. And they will not extend them.
Hmm.
But they will flag a place, the postmaster will go and confirm that the flag area is, is correct, and then we can put up a post. Spot, or put up a. So that's how simple it is. They don't want anyone to know. But I did listen on the Bass and Network.
So, yeah, but.
Well, it will probably be on Proco. Well, because they don't wanna do it on Main Street, they don't wanna have it on, if it's too congested on Main.
So you'll just have a post block.
But my, any packages will be delivered to my house.
So, so each person that wants something like that has to.
Have to contact the O State City Postmaster. And someone that they would like to have there, and I'm planning to leave the route.
But they're not planning on opening one back up?
No.
Like that initial letter said that they sent to us.
Yeah.
I'm here, please.
I add, well, I can add that they need to have exceptional technology skill, and then I also have a, there is, there is part of all social media and website. Then I will update the posting, I will put it, um, put an ad in for newspaper, I'll put it in the other two, uh, locations, and I will, I'm gonna put it also on the state of Kansas. Jobs high. Um, and share. So. Okay. Well, I'm waiting on.
So what the best position is possible for all such, you're doing quite the very responsible helping with it.
Well, they're, what they do is socially.
Hmm.
She's a.
She, she. There's a sheriff there.
Yeah. But it's, but. The sheriff's office always at, I think it's for the county. The sheriff's office.
The sheriff's office is still part of the county, so we need to be careful on how it works.
Um. What you brought up all. She's responsible for social media.
Yes. Just pro.
I'll just call him home. If I can use the trick in the uh. The attorney's office has a decision maybe I do there. Okay, I'm gonna call that one. Alright. Sounds good.
There was one uh. Failing thing, commission, it's got number one.
Oh, because it's transferred, I transferred it from a PDF to a Word. I love how everything has changed. Thank you. I'm gonna hand you um the. This is the website policy that you came up with. You want to.
More copies for Dylan.
I have one. Well, you haven't, you shouldn't do that in this morning. You just might email. I have given them a copy of our.
Sure.
Hello, how are you?
Very good.
Pretty good.
I see I'm here to do that, I'm insured, it combines with disability and quality act in twenty ten, one thing we are seeing is. There are a lot of firms down in New Jersey that in California that are suing um ADA compliance websites, so. Um, all the websites have that background code that allows screen readers to like review all the information. Is that even that?
That's what website or city club. That.
Okay.
So city club is a company that helped us with the website and they shared that they have more than how.
Okay.
Yeah, they're the vendor that we're using.
Excellent.
To.
So that's why we put that in there.
Perfect, I I yeah, I was.
Oh, yeah.
Assume that was the case, but I mean, they. But yeah.
Basic stuff and then they do all the management and management.
Yeah, but yeah, some of these.
And we actually, the the policy that we originally put you was. I was out of. Four different policies.
There was parts and pieces that were, there was some stuff that was.
There's some we could even name, but we have like, yeah. So we pulled uh several different policies and reviewed several of the policies and. And gleaned what we thought is more appropriate for ours.
Because I think tomorrow is the.
Tomorrow's your live, yeah.
So it goes live and then the old one will then be taken. Yeah, how's that work?
Uh, I mean, that's an Amanda question.
I really did.
I think somebody. Yeah. And I do, and while I was cutting your ears, um, there's the internet. Is on that, it's on that website and I have put all of our employees on. List and listed as employees necessary and all they have to do is create a login. And they can log into the internet. And on the internet has all the links to all of our benefits, our benefit information, it's all our uh. Or, you know, all those different links, it's got forms and stuff and so it's it's very, it's got. Birthday, I mean, not the actual date, but it's birthdays are this month, we work anniversary this month and they're posted on there. Um, we have like a page that we can add.
Like, tell me what the intranet.
Intranet is only for employees.
So it's part of the website, but if the park is kind of not, it's not a public site?
Not a public site, they they create a login, they can log in and I can show you uh sometimes, but it you had it. You're already, if you have access as an as a. As an employee, maybe in my office, but some people I can't log in. Uh, but I can show you someday, I mean, usually I get go live, if you wanna come in. To my office, I can show you what it looks like, but uh it gives our employees access to necessary information. Once we give the uh on clock plug and the the portal, there's links there and then also how to upload the on clock plug and all of that stuff will be in there. So it's gonna be really good these ones from the.
Who else is coming in?
Well, Christine, I don't think Brett will be here.
I sent a message of season. I don't.
Yeah, there is an approval day and then what we do, once we get your approval, we put that on the website. And one of the things that on the website, on any website, we put. There's a webmaster link. The webmaster link.
You guys forget to pick the color ties, so I'm gonna show you what color ties it's in.
Uh, yeah.
The webmaster link with that email on that. Well, we're here, it's for Brett, I don't think. So we would like to put that in the policy for you review and.
So then as departments have all their stuff put online and then at some point someone may say, oh, I wanna add X Y Z to my page. They can go to one of the admins and then that gets put on or how's that, what's that process looking?
Some department heads wanna do it themselves. Others who don't, well, we're here for it, so we're talking about like. Mm hmm, emailing us or having a. Group email that we can all get. We haven't talked, I don't know.
But there's a process, you know, if there's someone in a department that says, oh, this will be helpful on the website, I'd like this one to be added.
Yeah, on the website, it's gonna be the webmaster, you know, on that. Again, go to all of us. Yeah.
I mean, once the webpage is set, there's no, no changes on it.
No, it'd just be like adding, maybe changing the document or like what I put in there and I. You know, open it up and it had something, stuff like that.
My marketing analysis has to go on every year, it runs for a month or two and then they take it back down.
I was just saying. I was just saying how odd it was, now somebody wants to wait for another one.
You know, um, I don't think that, and the thing is, is actually the website, save it if we see anything, contact the webmaster. Any change was or anything out of date and that's what, that's what states we're responsible, so if we see something on the sheriff's page. You know, that that somebody reports that we can send them a notification, that's why we state that the department is responsible for maintaining. And responding to updates either from the committee, so if somebody notifies us, we notify them and they have. You know, we we're we're holding on these these nodes, we go in there and they get correct. Hopefully, it'll be quicker than that, but we notify them so they make that correction.
Or tell us what they need.
The user can notify us if there's a broken link.
So I mean, like, for example, on my page, um, links to a lot of state pages, so state does anything with their website, any of those links break. Then someone can say, hey, I tried to go get this form and it doesn't.
And then it also states that any links to the third party, which is definitely the other, we're not responsible for the on that. That's the one's responsible there, so it's putting that in all on voice, but come and go to that link and some, they get misinformation or something, they can't come back and mess.
I mean, that'll be routine stuff and probably um. You were just talking about like when your evaluations go out, you know, doing banners like tax statements for mail or taxes are due. Those kind of things will. I I don't want to be getting.
Court help.
You know. For the most part, the cost on legislature changes would be.
Ron, Josh, you guys say anything out there?
No, I mean, other than the ADA stuff that uh that I mentioned earlier and if that's covered by some plus. Yeah, I mean, that's that's the major liability. Um, I've been seeing recently firms are just gonna sharpen around levels. What are we shooting these policies?
Well, this one, um, there should be a link on the website to to the policy so that if anybody wants to respond. What that that and that should be added on that. Click links in the bottom or and then um. I think that there should be a page that we put like. Kind of policy that, I mean, we haven't done anything in the past, now that when I did the uh. The special harassment. The training memorandum, I put that out there. Underline any policy, but I think that might be something we might wanna discuss, is where we can put these policies, do we want it? You know, I mean, there. You know, a lot of them put them under HR, I think their policy, I don't know why they're doing it, HR puts it still, I mean, you can't. Yeah, again.
Not every policy is gonna be HR, HR related, so our repository of resolutions, what's the, I mean, I would probably want something. Like, once you do it, it can be filed with the county clerk, like we would have resolution. Maybe that's the best way to do it.
I think when you're talking about a physical hard copy, aren't you?
No, we're talking about. Like, go ahead.
Oh, okay.
No, no, I'm talking about hard copy regarding, or it's it's an online system, but. To distinguish between just website content and official actions of the board, if it's not a resolution, you probably get to have some sort of filing. Procedure and then a repository of both resolutions and policies. Uh, and that should include, um, you know, some sort of file system that's not hard copy, so we can retrieve it if it's requested on an open record or something like that.
Does the website have that ability? Does it have?
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can create.
The website is only for public. No, but the intranet, yeah.
I mean, so what you're saying is just have a hard copy in a file folder that says county commissioner's policy. Hard copy in there, then a scan copy so that we could, if somebody called it and says, I want it, we can see where. So, no problem, yeah. Which would be on the intranet side. Right, but if somebody who's publicly wants to see it.
Yeah. So, yeah, if you adopt this, what I would say is, you know. Updated with the date approved and then we'll file scan. Uh, recorded or whatever you do in your office. And then we start that procedure.
So you're saying approval is like a resolution number?
No, I I think that's why I asked, is because resolutions have a, but you're not really resolving other than you can do a simple. I think the minutes are next, you don't need a separate written document to adopt this, you can just put it in minutes. By unanimous consent or. Uh, this was adopted and then. The approval.
Why we got a date on it?
Yeah. So you can write that on and then. The minutes will correspond with.
So don't take this now as a motion, but a simple motion such as. This policy is about the virus is. Uh, for county commissioners effective twelve five point two. Row and board.
For the company to be recorded to.
Did you get to that? So I'll make that motion, that's where I don't have a question.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the web. Um. Website management policy effective twelve five point two and coming to support time going forward.
Second.
Oh, it wasn't hurt, sorry.
Hi.
I'll call it to the center side. Motion there is. That'll all assign on.
And then when you get it, get it scanned, everything right, getting your copy and then I'll. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I guess the weather sounds gonna be.
Uh, looking like it's gonna be an interesting week. Depending on our temperature, however.
Yeah.
Looks like it might be a very short weekend next week, so.
Yeah.
Which one?
Very short man.
On the. Down or the seventeenth?
So you're going to nineteen. You're going to nineteen.
Yes.
I'll be checking it out.
Yeah.
You're gonna zoom in on it.
Six, seven, nine, all probably.
Oh.
My, you're nice, I don't know how to zoom in, but I follow. You know, I do better if I follow, you know, sweep my eyes. The six, three, one. I don't have a minute while that.
Yeah. 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 Does that online have a link posted for them to zoom in?
So it currently has one. And it has a link to YouTube, I don't know where that's gonna be on the new one, but.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you go to our webpage right now and you go to the main page.
Yeah.
And you go to the right and there's a picture of the courthouse, you scroll down, it has a link to Zoom and it has a link to YouTube.
Oh, okay.
And so you can just click on that.
Okay.
There was an issue when you clicked on Zoom that it was requiring some sort of a sign in and Amanda said she got that worked out to where people, when they click on it, it should just.
Right.
As long as you have downloaded, if you're on your phone or computer, as long as you've got that app.
Right.
Available, then it'll just open the meeting. Uh, but there was a problem with it and Amanda said she fixed it, or you guys didn't know that along the way?
I need to do it. We got ourselves confused.
The other group's on on extended. And then is that, what's the zip line?
YouTube is. YouTube is what people can watch live and they can go back and watch it if they're not watching it live. Zoom is what you get on if you wanna, if people wanna participate, they can come on Zoom, they can do comment.
Right.
Or if you have someone else. Still. Scroll down. It's harder on those people.
Right here.
That's YouTube and then join Zooming, so that's the link for YouTube if you wanna join Zooming for that.
Sorry, I'm a little bit.
Do you have something on it, Rob? Okay, well. I can't help you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Do you have Zoom on your phone?
He went to a lot of trouble.
Do you have Zoom on your phone? Do you have Zoom on your phone?
I don't know.
Do you have Zoom on your phone?
Yeah, I've used it.
Yeah.
I've used it.
Do you have Zoom on your phone?
Yeah, so here's the YouTube.
I did the YouTube, I've done the YouTube before.
You can probably jump on the the Zoom there.
If the link doesn't work, then we need to let again, no, but she was working on that.
Usually if I have this, I'll just do it on my office.
I'm sorry.
You didn't.
I've zoomed one case. But most of them, I just follow him. You have a computer?
I just wanted to get that back to them.
Come on up, Mr. Park.
Have a permit or new phone line that's gonna be aboard under Marion Road. Over towards Poppy County. Pretty standard. Went through everything, they're just gonna bore that blacktop and they're gonna run the draw, the rest of it up to the new landowner. New service that they're installing.
It's a lot better, they bore everything now.
They don't cut the road.
Yeah, it's trenching.
Yeah, yeah, so much better when they give it. Unless the boring machine hits something. Comes up.
Oh, yeah.
And that.
Yeah.
But it's.
Yeah, hit something hard where can I go three minutes more and then. Correctional boring at the start going out until punched through the.
I do, yeah.
They got asshole. Yeah. Hit the, hit came out new orange computer.
So I'd make a motion to approve what they call this a very long permit.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, for telecom.
Telecom will be the construction company, they're a logo over there and here's the phone lines for centering language can now limit, which is switched to give to Brad's team.
Right.
So I made a motion to approve a very long permit for telecom for the very long on. Right to move.
Second.
All those.
Hi.
I'm using the same side. Let's go.
Uh, I looked up with the permit that Josh and Ryan sent out for the hand. Where everybody wants to get in there.
We just approved that this morning, we did ask questions on. The previous one. They were to pay twenty five cents a time and when they sent their bill, it says fifty cents. I don't know, this is extension. I'll make use of extension.
You might have.
Watch that, see. Relax the cows, make sure it goes on.
Well, it's supposed to be twenty five. But I don't know if you got that email forwarded from Missy or not, but she sent the document that they sent her that showed how much. Was it loads or was it?
Yeah, it was time, really.
So for that first extension, which was about six months, they gave us their calculation and you might. You you could look over that, but they also put fifteen cents instead of twenty five and we don't know where they got them.
Oh, that was really great, man. Oh, they might have went off of old original. But it was the one that did it.
It was all done in open video, so it's all on, it would be the back of the book if you had to. And even he acknowledged that one too, the the same twenty five cents a figure to the board, so.
Yeah, and uh, as he reached out, I mean, and that's our back, but we're out with it. No, just keep it standard from the original. Instead of trying to change everything now, so that guy hasn't checked guns and wants to make sure that my check's shared out.
Will it get sent to you?
I think so, on that one. Um, and that's where they expect you to have a lot to make sure.
Anytime there's any checks that come in for those, have them just contact unless it's actually been run on that.
Okay.
Doesn't matter, we gotta tell us, we're gonna, or just tell us when they're this, when they're here.
Yeah. So we know that, we should make an extra contract too, that way should be keep it all valid.
I think that's. That is, it's a good checks and balance, they have two departments on the record.
And all gathered that way.
Yeah, cuz I would, I mean. We'll make it real, okay, so that'll get it.
Might say it last thing, we got was just the standard payment or the original rate of greeting. So, not that they recovered them, haul and everything, nothing there. Are we in shape on the um?
Yeah, I have a petition, hopefully I'll have that actually filed this week.
Okay.
And also the I'll view the review before I file it.
All right, all right, I'm just, I I have a. Guys, holding the line for people.
Okay, they've gone, so I have them just kinda holding that house.
Yeah, that's, I said, I just keep them a little, so yeah, it's a good race, that would be, hopefully we'll have that coming soon, so. And we were talking a couple weeks ago about, and hopefully at the beginning of the case, we can get an initial. Termination that it is subject to. Yeah, that's what we need.
Process.
Analysis go later.
Right, yeah, and that's the interesting part of it.
Yeah, and if it, if eminent domain applies and they rule as it applies then. And they say yes, then they could.
Form, yeah, it's just how much, how much we have to pay.
So. It's really all I have, we've been doing some just small ditching areas and stuff. Kinda. Kinda keeping in a holding pattern, we have a few of the trucks that were limited that we've offloaded it again since we missed a few things, so it's like, well, let's get some other stuff now. Um, all the signs have been put up on thirty mile, I will send a total amount.
I don't put my ones over.
And then we'll put, I'll send Steve Bowman a total of signs. That we used, so I have several sizes that we use for that. Since everyone was void. Um, I don't, we've brought them out ourselves, but if he could pay us for the blanks that we used them on. That would be sufficient. At least it's.
Is anybody complaining about that? No, I don't.
Uh, not.
I mean, I never looked at it otherwise.
I hope. I guess.
Um, I will do before. The world was like.
No, there were no one inside there.
I've got very much, I think. I guess I hold the words on it, at least I hold it on the back.
Yeah.
They do work, I don't know.
Yeah. So that's, that's pretty much my, we were just kinda watching the weather. We might have a chance.
Pass two girls with them, water maker looking out. I drove a water maker though, they haven't been the same.
I don't know, two forty just for a little while.
I drove both of them as well, so I mean, two weeks ago.
Yeah, we did some waiting last week, it's um, long ago, good long ago, yeah, water makers and. Um, if we worked up towards two forty fifth or. I know you started out on six three, we had an accident on six three together and. Uh, Sunday down through vehicle. That it a true.
Oh, that's on two point missing by head.
I wonder if that was on two fifty third at Morel.
Whenever one minute two years on. Yeah, okay, what's this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was like.
End of the morning.
I was like, it's in the morning. Did they carry over from the night before or did they just start that in that day? So I went out there, took the things out there, put the tree out of water.
Yeah.
Was that heavy metal, like a?
Yeah.
Heavy metal concert.
But yeah, I was like, oh, this, this is impressive.
I don't mean like, yeah.
I think he hit about ten foot up on the tree after he jumped the driveway.
Wow. I heard about it, I heard the guy was standing out or.
Yeah, I scratched on it.
Wow.
Interesting. So. So I'm only out there.
You know.
Yeah.
Right out of those.
I I used to, okay, the driveway just used to go on Oak's house. Now box, and then the car knows Dan, then went back up on the tree, broke the tree log into the river.
They're applying for his auto account and get truth.
Yeah.
And they're on the boat.
Yeah.
So that's how I have my. Everybody's are in trouble now.
Like the long beach that went off the bridge.
So, but that's, that's pretty much it, I say we're just gonna kinda watch. Yeah, watch the weather and kind of steam, if the temperatures fall right, we'll be pretty good state, but we do have. Plenty of salt right now, so. I have another eighteen loads that I got her name in the half horse, so that was approved by them down there. But we have a good, good start on everything, so. We're correct state, I'm glad.
But they don't know, okay now?
Yeah, we had a. We're looking right now. The one that we redid the transmission. They've got a flat spot on the cam. I'm gonna pick it up on that pickup, yeah. For all the gas ports. New can, the solid lifter, the replacement lifters. You're around twenty five hundred.
Yeah.
And this is what you're driving parts.
It's a fifteen.
Gas.
Yes.
But it's. It's real bad.
Yeah. Yeah, especially with just.
Yeah, I know, having a lot of on. But I'm like, does on it?
Um, rarely over, I think it's about a hundred, hundred and fifteen, so um. We. And uh. You can do the parts and everything, the concern I have about is when that lifter goes out of those six moors.
Yeah.
It will flat spot the cam.
Right.
Then you have the metal shavings that can get in the locker and lots.
So are you replacing all of them, who's in the bin, who would probably to replace them, because we don't know.
About about right now, where you're from. Right now, we just have a set, waiting, kinda trying to decide what would be the best, cuz.
Corporate corporate, so it was not in.
Yeah. Uh, as we have it yet.
That's.
Well, yeah, but can you even get to my parts? Yeah, yeah. Parts for, yeah. It's a common thing that mother.
Yeah, I've been in chat problems for the last few years, so.
They they've gone into a people saver mode, which shuts down our back song. That's your number five, the.
This uh, this about.
And then I'm sure you can get on those cars, you've probably heard of that.
I'm pretty sure your idle hours that they're trying to lose.
There is something that you can plug and play on those where it will not do that. Um, what all this, what it goes into that metal boat and shuts that down. Um, it doesn't allow the oil flow into that lift, which sees that lifter, which acts just like a metal blade.
Right.
To, and it just takes your engine down.
I told you that that's our sound, though.
Yeah. Remand the engine, those rims, there's something. That's not, I'm counting labor.
Oh, that's only four hours. Yeah. They get the airplane.
I think they fly them at eighteen hour.
I'm opposed one four.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
You know, you're not.
Feel like at work. When the.
Oh, I know, so.
That's what I have, um, you guys, uh. I don't know anybody locally that would pass what. Mother. Install that's.
A motor?
Yeah, or that kinda work?
Yeah, very.
That's what I wonder.
That's pretty major undertaking, because the program made the machine work, and I'll say he's got a machine capable of this.
Yeah.
I just put it out, though, if you're gonna do it, I put it out to a uh. Request was proposing, most of it, I think, everybody wants to go ahead on.
Put a bid on it or just call, call them up and just see what they would bid on it, maybe call several locations.
I would try anybody at the counter to start opening them, yeah. It's a pretty big undertaking.
It is, maybe it is, that motor sits back far enough where.
Well, most shops, they don't want to tie their shop up for.
Right.
At least at eighteen twenty hours, so they're gonna be there for a week. Yeah, so you know, all the work inside a week without. Having a shop lot of that all.
Yeah, so. Just wanted you guys to be kinda aware, where we're at with that, like.
No, no, Ron. No, they're wrong.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. It's not real good, it can go up on a trailer, it just sounds horrible.
So I thought it was a diesel, first time heard. I asked you that, was it?
Yeah, it was not a diesel.
Thank God it's not a diesel, cuz you got that as part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Dave Johnson's another guy.
Okay.
Man, my uh, well. That is basically arms.
Yeah. Yeah.
I know, it's, it's not worth it, so.
I think he grew up on.
Here's what he does.
Yep. All right, well, that's what we have so far.
All right.
Okay.
Have a good one.
We've stowed out a lot of, a lot of kinda calling different, looking different places.
Well, we got. Cold, so always up to that if we use any parts.
Yeah.
Or half rounds or.
Half rounds. Yeah, we, yeah, but uh. The last one that we replaced was just a regular gallon, I said, um, one of them. Um, for township. Driving over here to town a whole. Got it swapped out pretty quick because they already had it built and ready, so.
Yeah, we talked about the road going. Before Garrett's going, that's a low spot, and then we're gonna do that when they come next year to do that, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Cuz uh, he wasn't able to get out and look at it, I called him, well, and that's kind of look at it.
No, I mean, it's not that bad.
Yeah.
It's promoting. Kids like it back in the fuel bus. And they think it will zero gravity for a little bit.
Yeah, riding this little bus, I like that.
I've been riding too much once again.
I never had to ride this tour bus, I had to lock that little boat with.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is the school, well, we were at the school, I forget it's snow days, if you live in town, we'll see you at school, if you don't, have a good day out.
Yeah. Except I, I hated to do homework, make my homework, so I walked to school. Three miles.
Three miles, I feel like that is.
No, there's some. Have a good one.
You do? You do?
Thank you. Yeah, I walked from town to.
You said you had a bunch of resolutions? What's on my list?
Uh, let's come up there near, if you want me to make copies, I can, um. So, they catch up today.
I've got all their emails. I mean, if you tell me which one they're starting with, I can print them and put it in the print.
I've got three in Palm Beach, um. The first is the stepping out program, the sheriff coming in.
No, I would say.
Okay, well, let's hold off on that. I mean.
I have a question. In your email, you stated about how. Then about they contacted you and said in the past that the council would create this or something.
Yeah, I, so usually like best balance awareness, whatever it is, we come in the one proclamation. I don't know if this actually creates any program. It's just. It, it's the, uh. Lion County won and added an offer, was an added proclamation and then a resolution to.
So is this something that we've already approved that we needed to talk about, or this is something they want to present to us, but they want to have, we will do?
I, I guess. The latter.
Do you remember the lady that came from step up, the step up program, Tara, her last name evades me right now, but she came and she was the one who brought the information to Lion County? And she said that we needed to get into the county councilor because that's why the proclamation, like when they do those things like four H week or whatever, I usually just type them up. And, but she, it was a little different because it involved their new program they're getting. Remember she would have the sheriff on that committee and the health director on the committee and there's.
I do remember that.
Okay, that sounds like it's the proclamation, which is fine, but it's not actually. Creating anything that we need legal order to do, so I'd rather for on this one to have. Either the sheriff or her come back in and just say, okay, this guest is what we want you to do. This is why we want it. No, I'm having to type up stuff, but I would just say in my experience, everyone's something. No, they should. I mean, that's. Versus. Of the, I don't, I didn't know if Lion County has a proclamation. I, I'm not advocating.
Right. And plus you would need to know that we're supported before you write it up.
So I, I think I did it. Maybe I'd request the sheriff to. All that to say that it sounded like it didn't before, but. It. Reason for that many emails is sound a little. Where I'm not, I'm not advocating. That said, uh, I think this resolution, uh, setting up policy of application for the tax payments. Um. And which is diverted, I'm going to make copy, I can.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm looking forward. Do you know which? Are you looking for? I mean, I'm worried.
Eventually.
Oh, sorry.
It's not true.
It's not charter. It would just be.
The resolution that.
Yeah.
The taxes paid.
Not operating in tax.
No.
So what's it called?
Um.
Resolution is that was a policy of application to win more tax.
No, I just got a whole bunch of emails and saw trying to be.
With a little turn.
I've seen the check. Responding on.
He asked, he sent me or asked me some questions on my, uh. Power girl too.
Yeah, he's.
I mean, I tried to do. Uh, so.
I got it at eight ten.
Oh. So this would be dealing with tax payments, just to clarify the policy. Is that when we receive a payment on some of the parts that's already dealing with. Um, versus about. Something that is not, but the first year you have until September and the notices are.
Right.
Stand to, to make your payment. Uh, but if it's already linked with any partial payment. Uh, applied to the most current tax years, and it's still held over tax sale. They've got three years to know. You tell holdings.
So you have a reservation number?
Um, twenty six.
I'm showing that to the treasurer.
So I would make a motion with your resolution number two thousand twenty two dash twenty six, and so the resolution establishing policy. Applicates and direct impact payments.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have all those same sign.
Um. I have drafted a, a resolution to override link tax sale just to advance the discussion on final day. Uh, you don't have to pass that today, even if you have a sense of where you're heading, but I just wanted to give them there so that you know that's the next step when we're ready. Um, I drafted a special event permit road use agreement for, um. For the hands where it's a special event permanent.
That's already done.
You did the, you. Um, and lastly, I have the updated. Power sites and shelter use agreement between.
So let me tell them now, because I called the sheriff and he's on his way here.
Uh, and so I would.
Because he had some stuff in there that there was some, that's some water he wanted to send back, and I said, you ran that through the house and.
As far as the AG.
You know, as far as he had something he was wanting to send back to this company.
This is different. This is the AG's interlocal agreement thing I got rejected. It's about sharing the power of Frank County.
Yep.
So there were some deficiencies that the AG pointed out, but, um. That he also pointed out that they don't think necessarily. That an interlocal agreement that you might need it, uh, under KSA twelve dash two nine zero eight. Um. You can do an agreement that doesn't require, uh, AG approval, so that's a vital style that has, um. And we drafted it.
Yeah.
You wanted to approve that and then send it to Franklin County.
So you were signature on this?
Just a motion to accept and, and to approve the chair design.
So I'll make a motion to accept that power supply and shelter use agreement. Uh, very well, my family is out of it. And then chairman give us some.
So.
All of those goes out.
Hi.
Hi, all of those same sign. What's your?
And the other thing. Unless there's some other business.
We have a long, um. The towers and the charges.
Yeah.
We're counting. I'm sure I've got something on several, um.
Yeah, so I'll give the chair. I have ten o'clock, hope you're in. Uh, this is kind of this report on previous tax sale, file set aside from the sale. So I'll just hop onto a few minutes, but that sounds like it's. The ten o'clock discussion on tax sales, I told Christine maybe a couple. Even and so I'll get that.
Right.
We need one much better than that.
We're.
Well, I guess they want to. So I might do that.
Ryan, you tried to get on doing it at work?
Yeah, it was. Mine is per- permanently banned for some reason. It's on a king and, uh, to get on the internet, so. What have you been? Apparently Russian.
Did you try today?
Yeah, every day, every time.
And it just says banned?
No, it just says can't connect with the Russians. She had.
I'm like, I've never.
No, uh, it works, so just this particular one that my.
And you're using the link from your county website?
No, I'm using my phone.
Oh, you can't get on the internet?
How?
I'm on the internet.
Those things can be plus in the ship.
What was that one called, Josh, that, uh?
Uh, yeah, so the. Interlocal agreement. I updated it sent to you this morning.
Yes.
To make it not an interlocal agreement, the AG had suggested that the KSA twelve dash two nine zero eight allows for agreements. Between municipalities, but don't have to be approved by the AG. So I redrafted it, they approved it, same, it's the same language except adding in that language that doesn't need approval. So now it can go to Franklin County.
Okay, I sent that over to the nation to the.
Okay.
And then what was the other one that?
The other one is, uh, I think you wanted to talk about, I don't know if we need to talk about that attorney client or.
I'm talking about, uh.
Step up program. You know anything about that? So I've drafted a proclamation, but. I didn't, I wasn't in a position to be able to advocate for it, so if there's somebody that wants that, it would be appropriate that Crosswinds come here and.
I can add, we're.
Do it one more time, because it, it's more proclamation than it is of some sort program. Because of, is that correct?
As far as I know, yes.
And, and the programs aren't running, is it ranked?
They're going to, yes.
So it's just expressing county solidarity.
Right. And I sent them off this and they would do that.
Well, if you're in a position to advocate for it, I think, I don't know, I don't know.
We just couldn't, we could not, we, we remember someone coming, but we just didn't remember the details and we wanted to make. We were kind of wanting to know what that was, completely, the proclamation, it's not really binding us to anything, we're just showing support for.
And we're.
So. We just couldn't remember the details of the.
So we got.
Yeah.
Different. I can knock the last name. I remember.
Then we have to come back to like eleven. It's an hour.
Yeah, it depends on how many questions you have for me, but, um, I can give you the overview in about fifteen minutes or so, but.
Fifteen?
Typically then, there's a lot of interaction with questions.
So check where is the ten thirty Chris?
Okay. And this is the tax sale?
Yeah.
But you need to do.
Yeah, I need to hop on a Zoom hearing about previous tax sale, uh, at ten, but I'd like to be, because I'm gonna be writing the contract. For whoever there are fee.
Sure.
Um, so. I don't know if we can, there's anything.
It helps you, we have a fair or formal contract that I continue to, this is our county's views, I have the board revolution, I call, we, I'm just giving her a counting, I'm sorry.
That's me. Yeah, I, I have all that too, so we'll just get the other work product.
Okay, here. So whatever you want, whatever you guys feel comfortable, let's tell me with or. What plan for this topic at ten thirty, unless we've done?
I guess.
What is the history of the tax sale in the county? And do you typically handle them or?
Uh, I'm, I'm new as county counselor as of July first, so, um, I don't know.
Is the history that it's normally the, it's normally the county. I wonder if you have a tax sale? Fifteen, I don't know, next year, okay, so. August of twenty one? I'm. Some county to be able to, you know, walk in and do, you have a, in. Well, I think there was this one, there was one in twenty nineteen. Right? And then I think the one before that was twenty. Fifteen, twenty fourteen?
Yes, I, I can't think of back to the. Did it every year until Donald passed him in the little.
Well, Christine should have, she, the treasurer should have that. She should have the, Jerry, our first one of all, and you know, lock and key, so that way. Can we just stop now?
Well, this is good. Thank you. You're gonna be gone for how long, what's your name?
Um, hopefully five minutes. But I'm at the mercy of the.
But we. I'm gonna run upstairs.
Oh, this is what you said.
We have to move this. From well. I'm gonna, you sent me an email, I really should.
Oh. Hopefully you're.
Oh, does cell phone work?
And I hope you don't have T-Mobile.
Never mind.
I do, T-Mobile probably does. But they said it. But I don't even know what that means. Apparently there's a tower down. If you drive to two miles, I've already came in. Okay, well, to the north, we have, and right about there, we call two miles, you want your, your license, so anyway, if you go past that in the new direction. Like a mile, you'll sell on service, but if you're in the city, one of the, and you come next up. And they say it's a tower.
I was gonna say, I've never seen that, no problem.
Yeah, I have one. I have two bars.
Do you, and you're T-Mobile?
No.
Okay, it's T-Mobile, the, yeah. So.
I couldn't spell T-Mobile, so I'm about to.
I think I was running for.
That teeth.
T-Mobile and now I'm T-Mobile.
I've been forever and I've never had any trouble with it. It just stopped working Saturday. And I finally picked up to wipe my call and I called the customer service and they said there's a tower down, we'll fix tomorrow. And then I let it all begin, right along, which seems to be a bigger issue, like, you know, right?
And then one down which is top, nice sprint, but it's a sprinting over to T-Mobile and that is. That in the bank and something like that, or is it? So it's just. Many people out here, so do you mind?
And that's kind of the problem with yourself and.
That's why that's when you're using that, you know? I should see you have a copy of the process that I invented in, in a normal course. I thought I'll, I'll be standing here for like, easy, I'll follow along, I guess. If you are.
I'm going to bring Zazir and specific county. Yeah.
Last year.
Yes.
Okay, so. This. So we. I mean, this is what I'm trying to.
I'm going to. Yeah, I'm gonna start with Michelle.
It was at ten thirty. At ten.
Her job. Yeah.
Yes.
You did have a copy, Melon, and I was like, I did, I have one. Didn't everything, but I'm getting.
His path would be come out on.
Well.
I was thinking that would be another one of them.
And I shared it with them too, because I counted them off. I'm gonna suggest. I'm about to share this.
Good, more is yours, tell us who you are.
My name is Michelle from Long Island, very huge campus for the long, and I'm after, and I've been back under the tax foreclosure proposal, that way I've background, my career, and it's been handling Central County tax foreclosure for about thirty years, that my career has been. Uh, started doing tax foreclosure for Central County, back in the nineteen ninety, and so we've, uh, we've held that business, uh, within Central County, for, for a really long time, before I started practicing. And about two thousand and fifteen, we have started getting inquiries from rural counties, a lot of friends wanting to know if the county can handle their tax sale. Um, much in part thanks to the treasurer, Lina Dugan, who was in place for so many years, for county promoting what we did for her. And so we started picking up other counties, they don't want to do, our first few counties, one, Kimmin, Chautauqua, um, I think Coffee Town, maybe this one, or. Well, and in the last five or six years, maybe just received a lot more inquiries and continued to come out to a lot more rural counties to say that, so, and I input in the first letter of that proposal, I. A, a list of some of the counties that I grew, at the time, I took the letter in October, and the process of handling, they were, since then, I, I look down, it's like, Autumn County, uh, we've added, uh, Park County, just signed our name, right, and we, um, went into my purpose, so. We continue to, um, continue, uh, building our, our whole practice. Uh, with that in mind, what we have discovered over the years is that rural counties definitely function different than the bigger, uh, metro area, like Central County, and we continue to. The county does it a little bit differently, so I like to get in and the treasurer's and commissioners and figure out what small things that they would like to add in the process, and we try to accommodate all of those. Uh, for example, in some counties, the sheriff department, they control them, because ultimately, when you get through the legal proceedings, you have a sheriff's sale, um, some counties, the sheriffs want to be involved, some counties, they don't, some counties, the sheriff's office and treasurer's office work very well together, and some counties, they don't. Um, so we just try to feel everything out for each county and make it, give each county what they need or what they want in their. Best for them. But from, uh, the scope of the service, the first section of my information here, we not only come in and do your tax foreclosure sale, uh, but if there are, obviously, we file a petition, then we go through the legal proceeding, but then, um, we help get you guys to fail, participate in the fail, we show up, we help, we get counting, um, we help the registered deeds office, they need, they want us to prepare those deeds, we prepare, we get them filed, and then after we're done with the sale, if there are post-sale motions that people want to challenge the sale of their property, or want to set a buy sale. Uh, we do all of that, the only, the only time we can cut off our services is if someone were to, we went through a post-sale proceeding or motion, someone wanted to appeal, and so there was a property issue going to the court of appeals, uh, we would have to sign a different engagement letter to handle that, that would be on a different. The arrangement. Um, additionally, and I think the treasurer's office, most counties like this, as, as, like, the sale has started, the legal proceedings have started, the local clerk or your office, um, people with questions about, how do I pay it off, can I pay a part of it, can I get out of the sale, what can I do, how long do we commit, take all of those things, and we do have a attorney's office, just to consider this call, that, anything that we can, and we try to put you to answer the easy question, but then anything that becomes complicated or complex, we do, give them our number, um, have them call us. Um, and understanding that these are your constituents, we do our best to handle and gently get them through the process, and in some cases, there's nothing I can tell them, except, you know, you have, yours is one of the packets, you have to pay these, uh, or the property is going to be sold, uh, they ask about payment plans, or can my family member buy it, or any of those legal questions that are governed by statute, we, we help them with that. So counties have a lot more callers than other counties. Uh, but whoever calls in, they can still get to talk to me, or my partner, Chris, the one who I said that has been doing this process for thirty years, or a university staff, and I have, um, staff members that, whether it's a call, means are questioning, they take care of all of my, uh, legal process, the paperwork, and they're pretty well versed in tax foreclosure, because they've been doing it not as long as us, but for, for quite a long time, so they're also available, and if you can't ever get a question. You're often free to talk to the first staff members. So from the scope of services, we handle not only the legal filing and just getting the case through the court system, but we try to handle, um, any of your constituents that may call us, and, uh, sometimes there may be something funny on our property, sometimes that requires us to do some legal research, uh, we've been in counties where there are huge gaps of title, uh, then we'll work with a title company to see what we can get to make sure that we are giving everybody that could possibly have an interest in the real estate notice of the pending warrant traction, so if it can be saved, it can be saved, and someone's coming to pay it. Um, our goal is to not take people's property, our goal is to get the taxes paid, get the money to the county, and try to keep the, in the, uh, keep the property in the, and take care of the property. Who cares? If you have an interest in the property, uh, sometimes that means we start a case with a hundred parcels, and we go to a failed account, which is really, really great, because the county actually brings more on the dollar if people redeem and pay the taxes than if we go to sale, so, another reason to try to clean up as much as we can before we get to the actual, actual sale. Um, I have, I have a little mention in here, that's really the scope of our services and what we do, um, that and resource that I mentioned, we've been doing it for quite a while, I have a staff that takes care of nothing but tax foreboding for me, um, they're fantastic, they are available to answer questions, but, um, as well, um, but they, for the most part, they're well orchestrated, and, um, they can, like, probably get along sometimes without me, which is a lot nice to say, but, um, there is that, so, anything that paperwork, document, drafting, none of that is even by the people around us, and many of them, like, your office, they call that off, you guys, and, and they know all of that. I know the big question is, oh, maybe, how are, how, how do we get? So how do you match you, as a third party hire, technically, we have a right of county counselor, uh, we get to charge a per parcel, uh, or back to your, so there are three fees that will go, that get attached to each parcel, one of them becomes that one, the tax foreclosure, and it's turned over to my office. You have an eternity fee, um, then it's that, and then a core cost, and a title or a fee, so those, and we don't stack, it was on all of them, and typically, the treasurer puts in me a list, they, the treasurer's got thirty parcels on that list that are. And listed in my office, and we're gonna start processing, setting up files, setting up spreadsheet, so at that time, we'll just come into my office, we tack on the enterance, and, and I'll talk about how many that that is, I mean, but it, it can range depending on whether you're sending me five hundred parcels, or whether you're sending me five parcels. Uh, obviously, the fewer that you're sending me, the higher rate we have to be covered, we need to cover my cost, so, so when the person listens, lands on my desk or in my office, I'll let you know, okay, put on the adjournment, either anybody that comes in at that point, three teams of parcel, has to pay whatever's owed to redeem, plus my eternity fee. Then we'll work up some spreadsheet, the master spreadsheet, the county will pick the title company, and I'll let you, uh, and you guys know better to use than I do, uh, you can negotiate your way with the title company, and then just let me know, it's a bit, the treasurer will then, okay, we're gonna be, John Smith, this title, the rate is a hundred dollars. And, um, I said, okay, then I will go ahead and communicate with the title company, we can talk about what I need, what I'm looking for, or how a report should be prepared, all of that, do you cooperate about that? Um, but then I'll call you and say, okay, I talked to John, it's the title company, now I'm trying to add on the abstract fee. So at that, for that, for anybody that comes in to redeem their property out of the tax foreclosure proceeding, will have to pay all taxes, other than, plus my eternity fee, plus the entity, and I give you a spreadsheet that will track, will help you track all of that, um, every parcel, my eternity fee gets checked and redeemed, and then, you know, they pay, they come to me, when they get these from me, then they'll strike. The third fee is the core cost fee, and that gets, um, added on, that's the redemption cost, and that gets added on at the time we file a petition, because definitely, if you're just sending me the list, or just giving the title companies, that. So when the case gets filed, I'll, 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 and that's the. So at any point up to the five and a half days, uh, they can get out a little cheaper than if they made to begin with, so that, you know, they can, they came in today, they were getting no financial file, um, and then they're getting where they, 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 one, no financial possibility, possibly, you can show. Um, now, there is a little bit, uh, something that started doing from about five or six years ago, with regard to filing a lawsuit, and then, and you're option, or the commissioner, not having to keep them, in Central County, you're having really, really struggling with what we call the frequent flyers, the people that were on the tax, the latency that they get theirs, they get their first letter in September, and they come in and they pay the oldest year that makes them eligible for, uh, tax foreclosure. So for example, on residential property, it's pre-year of the building for tax, and so, right, I think right now, only in this year, two thousand and eighteen will be the oldest year, but, that's right. So what they do, they, I put it, my tax, the liquid, I know eighteen, nineteen, twenty, one, one, um, and now I'm wanting to, uh, I'm gonna go with an eighteen, eighteen is the year that effectively qualifies for being in tax foreclosure, so they come in and they pay eighteen and nothing else, and then just wait till they get down to next September, and then they'll come in and pay nineteen, so you never, counties which are really struggling, you've never getting those parcels cleaned up and getting them off the, uh, tax foreclosure list. So, once you file the lawsuit, there is no ability to come in and pay a partial, make a partial payment, once the lawsuit is filed, once we get the lawsuit filed, we, you have to pay all of the, anything that's a lien, and so right now, we, in fact, I just filed one, um, last week, and I can't remember what county it was, and I had a question come in about, that was, because I had a question come in about, um, do the twenty-two is now on there, do they have to pay all of twenty-two, can they pay half of twenty-two and half of twenty-two, and then, and the answer is no, they have to pay in whole, completely, all of the original tax. Uh, and we're just keeping it out of tax, but, now the reality is, we're not gonna have a sale, which is probably going into March or April, so they have some time to pay it, um, you can work out payment plans, or maybe play that. Um, so what we started doing in Central County to sort of met some of those issues, we have a lot of the, uh, we file what's called a skeleton petition, so we get the list from you, that very first step of the parcel, like, they sent to my office, we prepare what we call a skeleton petition, and we name, uh, defendants, only the people that are identified on the tag. So anybody that listed, uh, an owner or a visitor, the property on the patch, is named, we just kind of scowl in the kitchen, what we call it, for lack of a better term. It sometimes takes counties, I mean, everyone to give a title work, I don't know how, just their title, or, or sort of, you know, online, or they do everything fairly still, um, but while we wait for the title work, we have a lawsuit to file that is now requiring everyone to come, so there's, it basically cuts out that window of being able to come and pay your oldest year to get off, get off of the tax sale. Some counties love to do this, some counties don't, some counties want to do that, but want to do it after they've sent a final warning letter, um, we can coordinate the warning letter, we can send the one letter, you can send the warning letter, it just really depends on how officials are treated, and how they want it treated. Uh, the filing of skeleton petitions are probably done in all my counties right now, it's all different, based on the warning, whether it's, they not. Counties don't want to, the treasurer's don't want to, they, they receive my bill, they receive all the notices, they know the tax return to, and file, so that's what we do. Um, once the, uh, once the title work comes back, then what we do is we do an amended petition, and we include anybody who isn't identified in that title work, mortgage companies, the lien holder, judgment. Uh, we did the amended petition, we filed that, now after we, uh, filed a skeleton petition, which people do, uh, people will, just by, if I'm identified, so anybody that is identified, know that, that it's not a lawsuit pending, when the amended petition comes, get that filed, all of the additional indicators will do the rest of the, on the case, but we don't start preparing any costs until we get that, we don't do any publication, we don't really move the case forward, we do legal proceedings until we get to the filing of the amended petition. Because if I publish a skeleton petition, if I, if I filed a skeleton petition, and then ran a newspaper publication, I'm gonna have to do it again when I amend the petition, so we, that skeleton petition, it really just, basically, lets a lot of people in, I'm all that, that, that. Um, so, maybe that, that all makes sense, and again, we do it however you guys want to do it, and it's up to you.
So we made a resolution this morning that has, anybody that comes in and pays their taxes has to pay current years' worth.
So they would pay twenty-one and twenty-two, yeah, that are the most current years.
Which means they would have to pay, if they wanted out of the tax, so they'd have to pay twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-nine, eighteen, which is in essence what you're saying.
Right.
By resolution this morning, we made that possible, it's like, I wrote it out there.
That is right, and we had, there are almost some of the large counties, like, for, like, that you, we moved that Central County campus revolution, we wind that county, and another one, and keep it through that, there are certain counties that, under the statute, are, if you read through the, I know, thirty, the whole tax foreclosure statute, there are certain statutes that have been taken, Central, I wanna say, Central, um, Central, Brian, that, and maybe Shawnee, there are little carve-outs for them, um, and I, it, we talked to other counties about doing exactly what you did, and we go to the all dependent, and we, react to, but no one has ever challenged, when other counties have done this, so I think you're on my. Um, so that's good, yeah, but that's effectively what it does, is that they, yes, until you work your way back to two thousand and eighteen, um, or older, whatever it is we hold, that keep them in tax foreclosure. Um, so we, to kind of get through the rest of the legal process, we have, uh, it takes us about, it's a little different than the normal litigation, it takes us about three to six months, depending from who they file, and how the title work comes in, to get through just the initial part of, we file the lawsuit, file the amended petition, we get everyone's, uh, we get a lot of service back, depending on how old some of these taxes are, we will have people down, get traded them, we buy them, um, then we do an affidavit, file with the court, that, that, we've done all of these things to try to find these people and serve them personally, anybody that we have to serve personally, they are, you know, certified application. So we initiate the publication proceedings, which is, uh, we have to publish in your role paper one time a week, and three, second, it's just, that's the notice of the lawsuit. And then, uh, there, it's forty-one days from the day that we first published, and people have to come in and file an answer, um, if the USA has a new, I recently, non-parcel, there are sixty days to, so actually file, get the publication going, we've been around a way.
What's your process for, uh, service before publication, you just have three.
Certified bill.
Certified, you tend first, personal law?
Uh, if we. Uh if we have a county that they wanted to use the personal process server, and we really needed it up to them. In Chautauqua County, when we first started down there, it tried to run to the sheriff to do all the personal stuff again. Um fortunately, the sheriff didn't want to do all the personal service, so when they received the re-boxed uh service documents, they were going to be in it. It took them a month to get our service executed. We kept, we're having ten, we're our deadlines, we've got time, and so you're waiting for sheriffs to enter process. So when we posted the people before, um, others, other treasurer, they said, no, go ahead and do the first one. So we do a certified mailing, um service, anything that is not received, comes back, then my, we'll get traced them. Till we find them, and she keeps working it down, working it down, and she'll do all the research, but I'm finding everyone. We found, all the, like, we had one out, and even the county last cycle. Uh it was an allergy claimation in a ninety, we had served at the property, we served her mailing, we, that those both came back. Um we did some give-tracing, we found a couple more, I just, the both came back. Ultimately, we found her in another county, it was the same call. Um, so we found her, we got her served.
Skip, skip tracing certified, and then if you have that opportunity, first one.
Yeah, yeah, and we just keep, she just keeps going until she comes to me and says, I'm out of resources, and you don't. We, we typically, we get everybody by some form of personal service, and it's a very small percentage that we don't. I have one, um, it's Washington County, and there's two guys that I cannot get through, they, I think they live in the UK. They had a tenancy address, at one point they were living in Canada, and the property is in Washington County. Um so I did it, when I did the uh last publication, I, I filed a special order that, that here's everything we tried. With the, with these people, they would use, that every taxpayer in the county that owns a property has an obligation under statute to notify the treasurer. Of any changes to their address. So, um we have the constantly defended cases in Central County, other counties on, where people are challenged, I don't get it, sort of. The first thing out of our mouth is the law that you have a obligation to update the county, the current mailing address, uh or where you can be reached, which is the tax plate. Um so it's always our first line of defense, and then we're able to come in, they, plus we took the seven additional steps to try to get you served. These all came back, and then we did all the action, and in those situations, publication is perfect. So, um, so we'll get through all of that, uh we have the forty-one days from the date of first publication, the default date. Unless it's the US of a parcel limit case. So once we publish, it's about ninety days, then just waiting, checking service, documenting back to our, that sort of thing. When we get through all of that, we have to do another publication. Um we take judgment, and we get a journal to hear judgment, that says, the county now has judgment, as to all of these parcels. And then we um prepare for the fail, and we have to do another publication, which is again, one day a week, for free, and a week a week. Notifying the public that there's going to be this public option. Um and that ended up, they take care of all of the litigation proceedings for the law.
So public, published twice?
We publish um three times, one time a week.
No, no, notice of suit three times.
And four, and then, yeah, two publications. Um, when we talk, only ultimately talk about setting for cost, publication considerations are a big part of that. So we have the trying fee, which gives me the abstract fee, which is just whatever your title company is going to charge you, and then the court cost. Um will include, uh help cover certain of the profit fees, um filing fee, and the big one is publication. And we have discovered that in a rural county, publication can be very, very expensive. And so, uh if you, if you, when you have a parcel with a, a sample, now we all, we have thirty parcels. Then we'll talk about what's your publication cost look like. We want to try to set a publication cost that's going to help cover the amount of whatever, whatever, whatever is that. And sometimes in rural counties, for two rounds of publication, might be spending five thousand dollars.
Are there, um, as far as your fees, are you first step or last step when it comes to that?
So, uh, no one gets redeemed out of property until they pay all of the redemption cost.
I get the redemption on the tax sale proceeds. Does the abstract or publication, the court cost get paid first, and then if nothing's left over, then you wouldn't pay?
That is correct.
So your last.
That is correct, because the court, the abstract fee and anything that would get billed on abstract fee or publication, we send those to the county. The county pays them out of general, and then at the end of the proceeding, when we do the final accounting, uh the county gets reimbursed back on those. So if at any time, it looks like there's not going to be enough reimbursement accounting or to cover my fee. We may, we have done, haven't faced that situation very often, but when we do, we can be able to go like a king in county and get a special order prior to sale. So like, okay, let's come in, and then we'll bid on these parcels, we'll go a hundred dollars. Or if not, we'll admit, let's uh get a four that allows two of them a profit, or, or. Um at the time of the auction. So we had, rather than that situation in Kingman County, where we're talking, and we're getting ready to go to sale, and we're doing all of that online crap. And we're, you know, two grand short. Um if we do, if these parcels go to sale, and don't help her very much, we're going to be short on giving, they're going to reimburse me in our fee. So we've got a full order, and I want to say, we call it a, a, their product fee or something, that allows us to say. Okay, every bid, whatever your bid is, you're giving five dollars, but if I, you have the five dollars, if the hundred dollar product can be reported fee. And then we actually charge them a twenty-one dollar due registration fee, so we collect that as a kind of sale. That kind of sale, so we try to evaluate, uh before we get to sale, like, okay, what do our numbers look like? How much have we collected redemption cost? Do the county going to be able to be whole, be whole on this, or are we going to be able to get our lien on this? Um do we need to?
Okay, then for the processing fee, has it sort of backwater?
Yeah, all, we, we, we did it in Coffee County, hundred dollars. I mean, if somebody really wants the property, well, they're five dollars, pay the hundred dollars, and then twenty-one dollars in reporting fee.
Have you ever set a minimum bid to tax?
We don't typically set minimum bids, because the risk, you have the option of doing that. The risk that you run, that you're not going to sell the parcel, and we're just going to see it again next year. Um so if you don't set a minimum bid that you're worried about what you're collecting, that's how we run the building with. A possibly new or court cost, or something, say special order fee, or something like that.
You do the tax sale on uh line, or just both the year?
Well, we've done both. So in rural counties, we um, we typically have it at the county courthouse, we set it up, a lot of people like to come in person for those. Central County took it to an online sale this year, in fact, our first online sale was in County, I don't know what his number is. So that threw in a third party amendment vote, so we're going to be able to manage that ourselves.
Yeah, Jefferson County got hit um by doing an online sale, a bunch of out-of-state people came in, did a, paid their five bucks. And then three years later, we're paying the same per parcel fee or more.
Yeah.
To propose on that again, so I think.
That was Jefferson County?
It's a balance.
Central County has been pushing, obviously, there's a new administration. Sure, sure, we have that, it's interesting to hear that. Um, I know Bynum County, and I think Shawnee County, they do all online auctions through the company of the source. Um and they've been very happy with it. Central County, the vendors, administration pushed for the, the street, they didn't talk to us about it, uh, not that it would matter, whatever they want us to do. Um but what we're finding, we're, people, I just, of online sale now, and we're finding like ninety percent of them are out of state there. So we have, in Central County, we, every, sometimes we do, I'm trying to agree, because you can hear like five hundred parcels. And so, uh the last few years, definitely gone down, and we, and right now, we're going to fail, like, with seventy-nine parcels, and that. I think almost four hundred are released, it started right on four hundred and seventy. Um, so we have a, been doing it for three years down there, so the county has, we have a huge volume. If, you know, two hundred people show up and register their bid at most Central County in-person auction. Um, but those are all local people, so I don't know, we're going to be seeing how that.
Central County have four hundred and seventy-nine?
We typically, well, five years ago, we charted every tax season in September with about thirteen hundred parcels. And then we would divide those up into three cases, and then, um so we're leaving about one hundred each case. Last year, we only had two cases, and this year we'll have one case, so the numbers have gone down. This is the first time we've been able to get drawn, so it counting on the numbers. Um, and I think part of that is the warning letter, because it's a number of the winner, and when people come in. There's a, like a two-week window, um, the end of September, the warning letter, without the rules of September, and then the list is turned up. Over to October, October one, and they'll get two hundred in mention to that one. So you know that those people are just paying the original years, because the minute it's when my office, my desk, we're cranking out a petition to get it off in. So, um, so I can talk to you a little bit about the sale proceedings, or we can talk about, I mean, the, we can. There are just sheriffs, they'll have everyone to manage it, we can do it here, um in the courthouse, we can do it, and sometimes we do that outside. I knew if your county had, you know, a, oh, six center or something like that, we can do it there.
Um, we did it here last year. But we had a really good turnout, we're going to do it in here, and we ended up doing it in here, but it had been advertised really well, so it had a really good turnout. A lot of the properties sold. Not all, but a lot of them sold for what we needed, and some sort of way over, so some of the landowners were getting money back. But I think the advertising part is really important, yeah, we had a good turnout.
So I'll tell you, and I have another kind of question about that, but I did bring a copy of, this was my, or it's first edition of the press, it's from Bevan County. Um, maybe, it's probably more, but I can have on the bag of here, uh. What we use in pen in the financial spreadsheet, this was an easy example to bring, this is our, this is our confirmation spreadsheet. Um it, it would really hit the pocket. The um, and I really only brought it for spreadsheet purposes. Uh, to kind of complain, there, there's a campus court of appeals case that. Um, which is, I need to, yeah. There's a campus court of appeals case that talks about how you um apply tax sale proceeds. And so we use that formula, that would give that hits court appeal, if they never gets challenged, then. Uh we have, we have a case that will give the back stuff on it. Um, and you can see, and I'm sorry if this is all, but, to the, not that I felt particularly that would be filed with our, with our court. Um, you can see on some of these parcels. That, a parcel number twelve, I don't know what that, the bridge of parcel listed, that the, the general tax total was seventeen thousand, and the tax sale price was seventy-five hundred. So obviously, that's in that law, the county keeps like all the way right, it'll show you the over-under there of twelve thousand. Um, now, at the end of the day, Bevan County ended up negative eight thousand seven hundred fifty, they ultimately took the law. They need to show all the way to the bottom, right, or they ultimately took the law from the tax sale proceeds. But we do have to know where the property, some properties will draw more, some properties will draw less. But this is a formula that allows to share, um each, each of those parcels shares a little bit of the hit. So, um, I mean, it's funny, this spreadsheet works if you like it too, but it might, it might not interest you. But just doing it this way allows the county to collect more than it would in some situations where you're just looking at. Obviously, the straight law on a parcel, well, it's twelve thousand dollars. Um but you're able to use, uh like, the fact that the next parcel was fourteen thousand in the plot. Um you're able to use that as a total beyond loss, so all the bigger numbers, the county only had a net lot, maybe, on the tax bill, so. And that's, and those are just written off. So, um, do you want me to go into detail about how this spreadsheet works, or?
I mean, I think the biggest questions I had when I came in was your fees, how do you get them? Um, so you talked about that, um. Josh, I'll clarify that you're laughed and long.
Yeah.
When you get your fees. Uh so I don't know if there's anything else, but.
No, we work really hard to make sure that we get paid, so. So we, we do monitor, what, what we get, every, we'll, we're going to do your work with my staff, to give us regular reports. Every time there's a redemption, they come in, we have to draw, someone from your office just then, you know, you know, the complicated act to. That, like, so it's okay, man, redeem, you know, person two, draw them in, pay the next hundred dollars, and you know.
So when I first ran in, we were at two eighty-three, and I went to guess with, um, the different research we've been doing. Some of those older ones, we might be around two hundred, or kind of where we were with uh eighteen and nineteen.
And what do you, what is the eighty-three that are writing that was drawn off, what would be the reason?
Well, one goes back all the way to ninety-four, so we've had some, I found another couple that actually were in tax sale, which particularly updated. Uh I've been going through, we need a razor on about ten parcels, you know, why they're doing this, this. Uh and there were some kind of wonky splits that murdered, uh, again. And then, um, kind of by the trickle bowl that I was going to send, um, e- either to our counsel. We're, we decided to confirm, that would kind of be the one who said a question that I would ask, and then we decide. But, um, that's kind of just ballpark, and we have had some people come in today, um, so we've had a lot of redactions, but you.
How many did we have in the tax sale last year?
On the. Uh, I think we have forty-seven, yeah. I think we had like twenty-some odd redeem, on that sheet that I, that summary sheet that I gave you guys a couple weeks ago, it said on there.
So I remember they sent out loads, how many did we get paid off of that? I don't know that number. Cause our numbers would have been.
No, there was only, as far as what was five, is what I want. So what the original suit was, how many redeemed prior, and then what actually went to the sale.
So the ones that got filed last year, if they prepaid, or whatever you want to call that, paid it before, they never showed up.
Right, if they were paid, it's from the demand letter, is that what you're saying? If they.
They know how many paid off with the mail.
I feel, know that there were.
I was saying, they told them there was forty-seven.
I was thinking it was close to fifty.
It was a significant amount.
Yeah.
Which is what, which is what you want.
I mean, nothing I found says whether it was paid on the main letter, or I, the court case was.
Right. Well, I'm just trying to figure out our numbers on where we're at, and what we had, what we're at, that's why I said this question.
So you're saying maybe around two hundred, if it comes in for eighty-three, you have reasons to. But I think either you guys or Josh, that you didn't want to do the two years on abandoned, so we're only going to go with the.
And what about like, commercial property, and also two years, do you have any commercial property that would qualify?
I did need a friend's commercial, um, because they didn't want to go two years, so.
So you guys, you have two years on abandoned, um, light property, as long as you can get someone to find it out, David, or some sort of application that the property is in. So I think they can date, and commercials, you know, and three cameras that follow them in that two year. And just by the name.
I don't think those numbers include commercials, so I'll probably have to run stuff, maybe one for that.
So going back to this demand, the way that your program is set up. If we do the demand letters, are they included in with you or not included?
If you do the demand letter, that's for, so let's say you decide today, you're going to go, but we want to get out, give you a demand letter. She sends out the demand letter, ten people come in routine.
So I'm telling they come.
Now, if you sent me the list and say, some people think that they all have a block if the demand letter comes from the lawyer's office. Because this is just another communication from my treasurer, otherwise, and so if you send me the list, and I send out the letters on fifty, when they come in, they have to pay. They're acting in my.
Right, well, our demand letters, we got them all, county council's, I'm not sure.
And I think Josh had said he, that they could probably, you know, get it out of court, whatever they want, so that's still something.
That's your choice.
I think the treasurers that say, you've got letters, your statements show they're delinquent, even in the paper, comment.
Yeah, it, that's the way a lot of the world turns, I think, it's just a few that are, um. What else about crimes? Uh and, uh, and those, and those are the treasurers, the cases, and the lender for a long time, so. Um, because they just can't get them to fight the whole thing and, and move it forward, so. But we're flexible, and to, what we will do is, um, if you end up retaining us to do your work, even though I'll have some conversation. I, and I'm not sure, I'm looking at the initial, if I'm like, thank you, um, with the initial form and everything, but. I'll walk you through the whole process and step by step, okay, here's what we need now, and here's what we're working on. Um and I typically, in most of the counties, I can communicate directly with the treasurers. Uh in some counties, I, I have a P D where the county council, the first thing they know, so whatever, you guys, and then, and. We cross every bridge, we follow you one, how do you want to do it? Who you want us to use for your title or the fee, and do you want to share them all when you're sale or whatever.
So it's kind of like a questionnaire, that you're talking to, what decisions we need to make.
Well, I have, I have like so many numbers that I was going to do, and I don't believe that's the same thing. I think I was, I can do that, but just, this is the, uh, this is how we track every case, the, we have a. And I have more copies, this is my, our internal record keeping, and I can, this may be how over you have. From preliminary administrative matters, and kind of the first section, and you can see like a mitigation letter, we're revolution, and have a meeting of commissioners. Um that, that are hot, and then petition title work finally to deserve it, and usually like everything that you do on. We're revolution and have a meeting of commissioners, um, that, that are hot, and then petition charter, we're filing due to deserve it, and usually like everything that you do on. We have so many, I've made it and women was with the core, um, so we just keep it on the checklist, and then as we get done, my staff members, it's posted here. And then we need weekly, we do something, and truly, I, my background is linked in general litigation. And so, uh, and then I have a strong background in human resources, but, uh, I like half, but like, I mean, not to be on me, but like. And so this is kind of a fun part of what I. You know what? And so I'm not getting a case where I can, because we always win in that room, so that's why I say it's fun for me. Um, but we need, uh, usually we need two day warning from that, and I, and we just have about an hour and a half to review all the counties, what's the status, and the next steps for each county, so. Yeah, I can assist you if I can.
So what has changed in the tax, so, business since COVID?
Oh, boy, that's a good question, um. Well, our biggest challenge in the whole county, people kind of paused for a while in COVID. Um, you're, and because of the three-year delinquency on residential property, we're kind of gearing up for counties that have bigger number, probably that next year. Um, because if you look and they, they weren't paying, the first year COVID was in two thousand nineteen, where people really started losing their job, earning money. So we're, our eligibility right now is eighteen, and so we need that maybe by next cycle, all those numbers are gonna shift, so we anticipate maybe. Seeing greater numbers next year, uh, a lot of counties just paused their sales during COVID, so sadly, those cases that I had pending. They just stopped for a year, uh, so we had to read through all of this stuff, um, in twenty-one, you know.
Which adventure, by the way, court system as well.
Um, and such weak counties, the commissioners were pretty adamant, and they wanted to move forward with taxes in COVID. So, oh gosh, it was such a nightmare, we did, um, we had restriction, we had that year, we had two sale. And we had, you know, we had restrictions, and we hold it in the Southern County extension office, which is a giant, huge. At the end, there's like four hundred. So we're like, okay, we have the chair, the vice governor, everybody's candidate, either, uh, like, and you can imagine.
Well, we had it here twenty-one, and we're in open county, so we just.
Yeah, you can imagine, but we can imagine. The one, I mean, we were down, our project, they're out of there, we definitely, you know, on a trade. Or everybody had, it was a nightmare, oh my god, we haven't done, so I typically, I mean, it's just not many down there, you have like four from a hundred and thirty to two hundred people. Show up to, to, uh, bid, register bidders, and so. And he's about eighty, so we would just have to be in the building to like a hundred, she'd be, wow, people were lined up, lined up to get. Get their number and get in the door for two hours before our doors opened. And we were standing there, oh my goodness.
Well, and so I don't know if this is happening in half either, but she, um, they have us pre-register the bidders before the sale, so we'll have. A solid idea of the number of people that would be expected to show.
So Southern County, we're the only county that does in-person registration, but now that they're doing the online, the day was, now that they're doing the online sale, it is all the G Ds and they have done the online sale.
So scares crap out of me, what he said, I'm not, someone with a mistake, I'm not, I'm afraid I'm doing.
Yeah, I would likely in person. But I don't think that it's a bad idea to do as much pre-registration of the bidders in advance, so there's not such a bulk of the day, uh.
The first one should register to bid, they have to, um, have the one, we have the access in Miami, and so if you do it all on the day, uh, it's a lot of pressure on the admissions office to check. Get bidders updated, it's not, because we'll, we're by a lot of information, but everyone has to sign a bidders update, we've partnered it. Testing when they don't have taxes in the county and don't firm their purchase on behalf of a member or something like that. Uh, and so what we do is when we do the publication, put the notice of sale, that's that publication, you do, if you want to do the registration, we will put that information in the notice of sale. Anyone who should move in, will have to come in and register the first lot in the day, when it was updated, blah, blah, blah.
So we do have a question in regards to once the number of parcels are determined. Is there some sort of electronic file? That has the information about the parcels, so that we, when there's advertising on the sale, that there's a easy place people can click on and just view all the.
Oh, like putting it on our website or something, yes, if you, uh, gee, I don't know what your mind, to Southern County, I can go in and do anything personal number, love the whole industry of taxes, calling people, the ones we have that ability.
I do think that there was something available where people in advance could go on our. Website and log that in, and then bring it up, but I saw a different county when they posted their. Sale or advertising, they had like one link, and you clicked on it, and it just opened up this whole document, and you could just scroll through and just had a picture of the property and all the information, which is all in one site. Instead of having to go and plug in the number for everything about the tax portion site, so I didn't know how that.
I guess we have to talk about legally, when they put together, we have all the Fraser data, and we have our tax partial search, whether that's something we put together or close to me. Uh, we would put on the website, we're having a tax sale and all of those things, but I don't know, we might get that county as new.
And maybe see how it did.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, they might page it and put it together.
Right, yeah.
When you say tax parcel search, that's different than a title search, right? Yes.
Yes.
Cause the tax parcel we do here, the title search is.
You can look our website and search for parcels when that was, yeah, current, current taxes, past taxes, all of those.
So, um, there are a lot of options with regard to that, that other companies have done, um, they have us, once we file the notice of sale and have bottom line parcels, thirty parcels. Um, we just have the thirty parcels that are, uh, up for sale, we have to do that, I was before, and we had taxes coming, they give the page to our filing. And that's for the day, we can T P S, we'll put a link, we can put a link on our website, you can go on your website, but it is a document, and it's short, it's like, it's information. It doesn't have pictures or G I S maps or anything like that. Some counties, some counties get in, get their, uh, maybe we'll need to help them find, uh, some department, some counties have a G I S mapping department that can help with that. Um, the other thing, uh. Almost like I lost my thought, because the thing is, we have to tell you with regards to that, so it's like, how many does, I don't know, right before the sale, people don't have any offers. So they, they do a perfect, like one per page, here's the map, here's the, the picture, here's the information. And then they, yeah, they just print them and buy them, and say, if anyone wants a book with the information, it's ten dollars. And they have those ready, at the time, people come in to register, uh, so that way, and some of those properties give to you, so let's say you have parcels one through thirty that are rolling up for sale. And five of them are deemed, we usually just make an announcement before the auction, it hangs in, and hand out a performance of these parcels that have been reviewed and checked off the list, so. Um, they might be the one, like, we try to, but that one's not going to fail, we. So, it is, it's trying to make a big deal, so, yeah.
So typically a tax solo would be where?
Um, depends on when we get started, nine to twelve months is like, from the moment you guys say your buyer, your list. Just depending, the biggest, the biggest question marks always how fast we can get the title one back. Um, some counties turn it past, and some counties don't, it just, it just, in Cherokee County, we waited, like, we had to be the big mess down in Cherokee County, it was. Free sales, with three different lawyers, and the first guy never got anything done, and he was down there for six years, and. Never been sent to title work, and we ended up with almost six hundred parcels, and they don't have any online items, so it was all manual at the courthouse. And nine, it was just so long. Um, so that's really, is your biggest question, but the legal proceeding day was from the day we filed, they did the complete petition, we're all over. To the day we take judgment, it was about three to four months. Um, and then setting up the mail, new mail publication, it's about another six weeks. So if I had full control and walked in with all the power done, six or seven months, but. And, and, you know, I'm not the titleless, but.
Yeah, so could you kind of speak to, this is one of the things that I run into, trying to look back at, in the last tax sales. She has a document that they need to hand to bidders to say, you know, you are responsible for blah, 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 you purchased this property, because what has happened is that we had a cap sale in nineteen. And it didn't cover everything, we've had to abate nineteen and then into twenty, because the sale didn't actually happen until twenty. Even though it was a nineteen cap sale filed, for example, so, um, just want to make sure that we're very clear. How, is that tiny, the current tax, what's owed by the tax sale, what it covers versus what, if I purchased it today, what am I actually owed for? So, because there's, there've been a lot of people come in and say, like, I bought with a cap sale, I didn't know that I owed anything. Well, by the time the deeds got filed, and we got it in our office, tax statements had already gone out. Uh, and those people weren't reported yet for those tax statements, and so it got missed, basically, because that, the people wouldn't have received the tax being put across.
And that hap, that happens, we're very conscious of that, because we run into that sometimes, we're trying to be, because we run something failed, so it's October one. Um, so we're trying to get, uh, you know, after parcels, through the whole receiving before the deed would come out, um, in the next, the next fall. We typically, when we have one that had a road, we've been able to get to sale, to give them one sale today, one sale in July. We've been the whole point, we've had a whole stack booking, we've been, we've done, if the tax was again, forty minutes, I'd be about it. But it doesn't really happen, like, she said, this year, which is now, maybe the tax thing, like you said, so, um, and I'm all kind of the, the. The delay has all been because of trying to get an, an online letter, of what the whole, we've been, we've been ready to go to sale from August one, but the county hasn't had their online manager, anyone is tucking it out. It can't be common, so we know we're gonna have an issue, what we do, that from all the new deeds that come out, we send a letter from our office saying, you did not get the tax statement. You're responsible for these, your history, your, your name is one of the rental taxable, between the time you were upon the property and the.
So I thought that was great too, because that's the issue.
Yeah, we had to, every year's based on. So again, we try to get it all tidied up and up on it, to avoid that, but we handle, again, we just sort of, we handle all of that. And we do have, that, that's been announced for so long, and I will redo the middle of that at the tax sale before, um, the auction starts, we have to. That is basically the summary of every problem that we encounter of sale, you know, people come in and they, they, they want to buy a house, and for example, this is always the big one. So they buy a house at a tax sale, they go to spend nine months working on it, and then they go to sell it, and they can't get title insurance at the time of sale. And they begin with one of the insurance, because you bought it at a tax brochure, and so they call us and say, I'm sorry, I'm running back, yeah, we do get that. And so we have an announcement there, you know, some underwriters will not insure tax broker property, and because they claim that they can't verify that, whatever we have, it's on anything, that's sort of by condition. And, um, that is not the reason, it's that it's a sale, and I really, you don't know what title insurance is, and you have to buy something else. They shouldn't violate, buy a, so, um, it is the reality, it's, it's easy for them, they hire our owner, they get a quick claim deed, we get a quick order, and they can file that in market, maybe action, and we have to go by the law. If you just file them, a motion for a quick claim deed and resolution, we tie it in our case, and get a clean definition that, that.
Are you saying a quiet title action, if a quiet title action indicates?
Well, I was so, like, sorry, so sometime when we sell the property, um, and people want, the way it stays, people want to flip the property, they go to sell the property, you know.
They give you title insurance, and you can base that for, but in order to resolve that, sort of a legislature fixing it. That, you're saying.
The quiet title action.
Quiet title action, in the same case?
Yeah, they can file a motion of quiet title in our case, and, um, just, and basically, one anthem, okay, have your lawyer call me, we'll give them all the information that shows all the steps we took to get certified. The personal service, certified mail publication, et cetera, here only have dated, we filed verified, what we did for service, and typically, they just go in and get, yeah, they get the necessary order, their lawyers done it to their agent.
Is that something that county can ask for in final judgment?
Um, technically, we always say that, if we have a great dispute going on right now with the insurance industry out there, we. We get all of that in our general injury and judgment, we say, everything here is sufficient, and this is, we follow the statute, we're fully in compliance. But if the underwriters for the insurance companies that say it's not sufficient, it legally is absolutely sufficient, and our general injury judgment doesn't absolutely be sufficient.
You don't have to buy that one?
No, the other, the underwriters have no obligation or private transaction to, to. Yeah, it was there.
Versus, or after the one year redemption, I'm not trying to get too, too in the weeds, but after one year redemption, just another motion, could that be part of the contract?
Well, there is no redemption right in tax, there's no right to redeem the property after sale in tax.
Not a redemption, a motion, the motion is set aside, statute can say it one year after the sale. You can't bring a motion set aside.
They, um, well, any, if the ultimate buyer was trying to set aside the sale because of that. Um, then, yeah, obviously, I don't have, and if we often, if the buyer needs polywee thing, like, no company won't, that'll, that'll give you.
My question, and we could talk if you.
Yeah.
As far as scope of services, the one question would be, would that be something that you could do?
Yeah, we, yeah, we tried to cut it all off.
Playing defense, just play offense.
That, which is part of the reason we sent that certification, that, and now in our, in the online, in favor of, um, in Southern County, we have them having to actually. Check the box that they received and read the instructions, so, and we use that, and we're, the first problem, well. Not only did you get a copy of these announcements telling you that competition to reason to set aside the judgment, but also, Michelle, we used to be open to the option, so you received your ready copy and you were the first. So. Yeah, I can do twenty minutes, right? It's time. Well, if you have any, if any can catch that after a lead, you guys want to shoot me in the, oh, I have my good card, um, you can do my thing, uh. I heard maybe coming down. It was, it was actually, I didn't know, right, the, I didn't often get to, you know, sit and, wasn't my Christmas.
Okay, so you did the one resolution, but we're not doing the other one, right, John?
Well, I, I would recommend an RFP. We can draft it and put out, and if they want to respond, it's all the same documents, I think this would be. Responsive, I don't think we need anything very specific, just the nature of the fees, nature of the services. Whether.
For this.
For an act sale vendor, if you're gonna hire somebody outside of. Which I'm fine with.
Well, after all of that detail, I can see why you're questioning.
Yeah.
In most, they understood you, I don't think you actually asked for a RFP, because you have the authority and the statute entirely correct, so. I don't think any of our plans actually put that for a RFP, maybe Spencer County, but then they.
I think it's more of a. Because we, we're never, like, that was in pretty much earlier.
Yeah.
This could be a change in what the county is.
So if we do an RFP, how, um, what's the timeframe that we leave that open for?
Are you ready to get started?
Yeah, we're ready whenever you send this, oh, yeah. Um, I mean, I could work out the RFP, but we could get it out.
No, I mean, tax rules, are you ready to send them to? An attorney or?
No, we've got some that we've got to work through. Um, before we're ready, I mean, for the most part, yes.
When would you like us to have your handy chosen, or a person chosen?
I would like to know by the end of the year.
That's funny, just given. I mean, if we do an RFP, I would, you want to get thirty days.
You want to get thirty days?
And then, uh, you can consider, uh, stuff within a week or two of the deadline.
So tax payments will do on. So people, so people come and pay back, and it's just like.
Yeah, it changes every day.
Yeah, I mean, they want to come, which is that, anyway, so you probably, probably, George, and.
Well, we do the RFP and give them thirty days to respond, and then, yeah, we look at those tax.
I can do the RFP now, by the time we do third day, it's gonna be mid to late January, by the time.
The other question I had was, have you ever done a percentage fee on? Stuff that's redeemed prior to filing some.
No, we've always done it as a per parcel, per parcel rate, so, um, in some cases. No, we've always done it as a per person, per person rate, so, um, in some cases, a percentage would probably benefit me. Uh, we had personals that had significant taxes, but typically we just set up last fee. And it's the same regardless of whether the taxes are two dollars or twenty thousand dollars, so we don't benefit.
Yeah, the only thought I had was that. It would be nice to have for our vendor to have an incentive to collect the taxes. Could you get paid the same regardless of whether we. Because the total proceeds proceeds are gonna be most likely enough to cover your. But when it comes to pennies on the dollar, we benefit immensely if we can, if we can collect a redemption. And so how do we incentivize that process through more rigorous collection efforts? You know, not just one letter type.
Yeah, well, and typically, we haven't been in the business of doing the, trying to get it collected, pre-stude. I mean, the demand letter, no one, anyone's ever asked of us. And so if you're in the, if that's something you wanna explore, that would be kind of a different arrangement. We are, we are kind of the stop that the county made when they tried out the collection efforts. Uh, we do have a collections department, and if you wanted to put things into collections, which would be a more of a, a collection type process. We can explore that, but typically by the time people are reaching out to us to do the foreclosure proceeding, it's kind of pretty warlike. I send them a letter and they receive the notice that, let's get the action underway. And our collections department does.
So would we do the command letter? From you?
Yeah, I think we, so I think we will all need to talk about what goes in the RFP. And whether those are two separate processes. Cause I hear you, I mean, most, if, if somebody gets a tax bill, most likely they're, you're not gonna pay it. Unless they give something and says, you're going to lose your house.
And I think you brought out of the room, um, sometimes our county, the counties will send out a command letter, we're talking about the. Counties will send them out, and they ask me to send them out. Um, when I send them out, the fee goes on, and when the discount to me to send a letter, so we've been in the country to. All the way that I, for personal. The, the, you send them out, there is no. But some counties don't have county councils that are very involved in the process. Um, and so they just end up giving a letter from the treasurer and what they're going to do through.
The three of us are new to this, and the first tax, so we're, and gee, you were the last if we do, so. Last year's the first time I've experienced it. Well, it's also a COVID, and I don't know. I wouldn't have a clue.
For the most part, the procedures probably all, it probably all will pay, and I think it was logistics on the tax sale that come off, and the tiny. This, the time that it took to get through every day with the COVID delay. Um, but you probably, and that's probably good flavor, what you can expect. Or you're, you're over our staff, and you need to have it, and you treasure it off. But we'll bring everybody up, and we need to bring up to cover. If you really don't wanna do anything in the office.
So the big guns, we need to make sure our numbers are accurate.
Well, that should go in the RFP too, I'd like to finalize the number of parcels that we're putting up a bit. Because your fee is gonna be set based on two fifty versus fifty. Do you have a general estimate of like, if it's two fifty, would it?
Maybe.
Do you have a range?
Um, like I just, that was. I have my little cheat sheet that I use in the office when I, but I try to be very consistent in all my counties with the number that I brought up.
That, you, that's fine, you don't have to. You could just put an RFP.
I'm smart, I'm a good job, like thirty or forty persons, twenty people, three hundred to three hundred and fifty. But typically, when we get over two hundred, that would be someone to shop accounting. And I need more maybe, closer to, to the river, do you think, somewhere around there. I think a lot of it's maybe having about two hundred of ours. But, don't count it, we do know. Yeah, then there's a lot of work to do.
Well, our goal is to get down for we, so we do this and we're doing them fairly regularly with the new resolution. I think that those two. That one and doing this regularly is gonna clean this up, it's gonna take.
Cause that'll start this, when they come in, they pay the seven point taxes, that's gonna start.
So when they pay, now, we need to be telling them that information?
Tax dollars are there, they're charging permanent taxes. Which will tell you that I have to work some of those three year ones.
Well, thank you.
Very, very informative, thank you.
It's, yeah, it's not either getting seventeen, I'm giving.
So you would write the RFP, you're just waiting for.
I, I mean, this has been a helpful process just to think about. We all need to talk, attorney, client, and. Get on the same page and then we'll be able to communicate that there.
Well, if anybody have any questions, you've got my part, then.
Along the lines of renewing property, um, switching from real estate to personal property. Uh, we've been putting stops on motor vehicle records, which of course are not making people happy. Um, one of the things is I ran a report of personal property delinquents, and it goes all the way back to nineteen six. Um, following everyone statutes and things like that, and then trying to follow up with Kelsey. Um, artist's report is, um, there is a process for providing them. Um, and so I'm trying to figure out from our county perspective. Um, I, I guess I need to ask our previous county counselor if they've ever been revived or. Um, because she's not aware of it, but from a personal property perspective. What is our statute of limitations to put stops on motor vehicle records for dealing with personal property? Because that's really the one way we have to collect this.
Feel like I should have lost my. I don't know.
Trying to reach out different ways and get different answers, and then I guess there's.
I mean, I'll, I'll get with you on that question. And as far as renewing a tax burden.
So you know, we file a court case every year. With the, the delinquent personal property, that's what we revive to keep them active.
Who's our vendor on? Did we have one, or the county council?
We did have a vendor, um, tolerant.
But why wouldn't we use the motor vehicle process as long as we can? They can't, they can't do anything. If we put a stop on their vehicle record, but it's a limitation of how many years back.
Your question about renewing it.
Yeah, so I just filed them in October, November, right, for twenty. In court.
You drafted a petition, or what, like there was.
Yeah, we just took them, the case, and then they created a case for each one, and then.
A tax form?
Uh, yeah. And then, but it's how is that? Tax case stay active, and what is our authority to put stops on motor vehicle records as those be aged?
So Christine. Personal property or real property? That doesn't hold somebody's license, it's personal.
So the real property goes through the tax. We put stops on the motor vehicle records, but that hasn't always happened.
If you're, if this is being done on an annual basis. And someone's delinquent for ten years, then every year they're on that, they're being filed every year.
Correct, but my understanding is we have to revive those court cases, like they did in Dorman or something.
Yes. So you're wanting to know how many years back can you put the stop on this?
And if there is a way that we have to. Continue to keep them active or current, to be within legal parameters and have stops on motor vehicle, what is, what is that?
Well, how far back are you going right now?
We haven't put them on because I was told we had to revive them every. Um, our Treasurers Association can be back with the statutes and lawyers from the. Okay, I can do that. But it's, so I'm trying to do the. That's our only resource, I guess, other than sending them to collection. Which I guess we've done in the past too, but it's very effective when I can.
I mean, the motor tax, the motor vehicle stop makes sense to me, but you're gonna pick up majority of them.
So the only question is, is Dan, you're, yeah. As I guess is what's a little of the statute of limitations on how long here is that?
On there every year, unless they sell one moves to Oklahoma and then comes back to Kansas. Those, because it's been three years, those get removed, or do they still stay on the record?
You can just stay on there, I don't understand why it would come off, because there's limitations on everything.
Yeah, so I will send you that information, Josh, sorry to.
It just says, such dormant judgment may be revived at like manner, the dormant judgments in the course of.
But do they have, like?
Yeah, you have, after five years. And then any such judgment remaining uncollected after twenty years can be allowed to be informed. If the county commission determines after consideration of all the facts is not reasonable to expect such judgment to be collected.
And then you think under fifty dollars is?
Yeah, that's, so it's case eight seventy-nine, that's twenty-one of them. I would say on most of that stuff, just draw a line on the stuff, and if it's not reasonable that we're collecting seventy bucks or something. That, we can bring in to the commission. Determine it's dormant, and once it's dormant, it cannot be placed on.
But the revival process gets it from, takes it out of dormancy.
And do you have like? Some big sticker values or something?
I, I don't, I'll tell my, I don't remember the number.
Can you run a report, can you see the dollar?
And then this, whether it makes sense to actually try to revive it.
Yeah, I know. Right, yeah, I don't, I don't know the cost associated or process to do that either, so that's kind of. Okay, so I will get that in front of you too. And then that's been helping with some real estate stuff that I guess I will kind of push to you as the, what you would recommend if we need legal. Input or whatever, related to the RFP.
And I asked Ron about the name change project we're still working on, because you said you did have an issue with printing report with last name.
Um, yeah, so I will just make a public announcement, if I could, I don't need to pull up anything. Um, the vendor who printed and mailed our tax statements, um, did not make the change to, as requested. Um, to, uh, send out forms with the, um, everything under one address. Um, we received a lot of complaints, emails, um, well, I got these two, but I didn't get my other properties or what have you, so. Uh, they did not do that, um, so I have asked them to analyze the costs associated and sending out all the additional documents. To, uh, give us a credit for that. Um, and they said that, um, next, going forward, and this is just this particular vendor. Um, there won't be an option to do anything different than exact name and address being one, uh, mailing. So if we continue with this vendor, and I, I would assume other vendors are probably similar. We need to work, and I, this involves clerk's office and your office. Um, and probably talking to C I C, but we need to figure out how we can reduce the number of burnings of names. And whatnot that are in C I C, um, to look at the costs associated with doing this every year. So, just wanted to get that out there too.
What's, uh, so is under attorney files, what's under? Sure. Where is it?
I'm sorry. We need an executive session. And that's what you're asking about? Okay, can I? I just need to talk to me.
Uh, that one's gonna need reimbursement to pay that.
So I make a motion with your purchase order thirty-seven twenty-one, nine four nine nine eighty-eight to Toxymeters Inc. Uh, payable, uh, the insurance department, and it'll be reimbursed by paid up. Oh, this is not this is. So purchase order, I'm making my share for the purchase order thirty-seven twenty-two to Bob Barker. We're back to this, and then nine seven seventeen seventy-one. This is the third, I'm gonna miss launch.
Oh, yeah. Depends on what they do with it. So there's that with any, any danger or somewhere else?
So I'm sure tonight I'll put. I told him I had an act, so I could go.
Yes, can you do another? No, not.
No, not. You don't have to blow that.
I don't know. I don't think I can do it.
I don't think we need it. Don't hear about that.
You better start whipping behind you.
This is the stepping up bill, what's our nice number, ten or seven? Is this a resolution or not?
That's not a resolution.
No, it's a. So.
So the line county wants a truck away. So I just went ahead and.
So you all do this a resolution?
So we're getting a number.
Twenty-seven is it?
Yes.
So I make a motion for a resolution for applying in those six counties, Kansas support for stepping up program, does anyone else suggest?
Second.
All of those in the sign. That's just there is.
You have already worked on the power.
Norris, say that again.
The tower shelter use agreement, is that though?
Yeah, Franklin County first before it.
Is that the interlocal agreement? Yeah, we did that.
The other day I wanted to talk to you guys about what are the divided items for the budget?
And just to confirm, you, you file signed agreements, Rhonda, or are you waiting on this one until you bring?
I, the copy of it now, just ours, but then when you get the copy, the copy with those signatures, I'll file that.
Fast and great.
I think I was asking that was really good. Letter to the tower topic.
That was the other thing, I don't know.
Is it ready? I guess, sure, sure question, is it ready to meet?
We have to be done with it because now they're, they look at sixteen hundred dollars a month to them, four hundred dollars a month, I keep telling them, look. We get it for a dollar a year, that's there.
So they, they're. They're ready for a letter?
They are ready for it.
So you've written a lot.
It may be better for you. Yeah, I know.
That was our question, is that I said, well, you know, it's really not us. So see, do they have in the tower? And I'll review that and then we can send that in part interpretation.
Probably not the most relevant in the road. I don't know what else to do.
Is our, our thing is up there now or it's not up there yet? So they won't. Put it out there and go.
There was a thing. They, they went down from sixteen hundred to one dollar. Four hundred dollars a month. I don't know, you want me to send that or you just?
Send me that and send me this.
The shakedown was on, their shaking was that.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to talk to you about was the line I said. I had a question, do I need to put my?
It's its own separate part, correct? Then it would not be, I mean. Most of those funds like that in the law enforcement, if I read, it's just in one line.
Okay, so I don't need to put a line. All right, I think I got it. Everything else going on?
It's fine, I just kind of make follow around, you know, people are doing, if they need help and get questions and.
I haven't given her a copy.
It's gonna be a refinement process, because we'll get started with this and there'll be something that we use and some.
I'm not sure there's been something on there we don't need.
There's. Yes. It's gonna be, we'll refine it, but we just didn't start it.
I need to check your client's events at some point.
I just had that sheet out. Who are you on?
Ryan, mission.
So I make a motion, we made an executive session with uh, Ryan Gruh Hasler, Josh and I. For a period of how long?
Uh, ten minutes, or let's go to forty after, so we got thirty.
Alright, so I'll say fourteen months to eleven forty, uh, with those previous people also present for the meeting to resume this. Because it's got some idea of representation. Second, all those embarrassed, hi. I also say hi.
One minute? Time?
Jay, motion, red, second, five more minutes. Unanimously through.
Okay, banning information. One minute? Time?
I was. No, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Incident. Okay, no, that's a tiger coming down. In seconds, sir. Ron, do you have anything?
No.
Fred?
No.
Other?
Um.
You all are right.
No.
I will entertain a motion for.
So. Move to Germany.
All of us, members, I. I made a good work of that.
I was gonna say that. Did I miss that?
Oh. Fine, oh, first six. We are a German.